Good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead and call to order the July seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. At this time, it is my pleasure to invite Pastor Jimmy Hill of the Salt of the Earth Ministry up to the podium. He'll be leading us in the invocation. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. That's going to be led by Vice Chairman Bob Solaring. And first, we will start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders. Would everyone please rise?
Let us pray. Father God, we just come before you this morning, giving you thanks and praise for your goodness, your mercy, and your loving kindness. Father God, as we come, God, we lift up the Commissioners before you, Father God, this morning, that you give their, give them the knowledge, the wisdom, and the understanding that they need to carry out their service, Father God, and we ask the blessings of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob upon them, Father God, and God, the itinerary for the day, God, that they may have his free course, that we may go smooth, Father God, without any hindrance. And God, we ask that you bless their families, God bless their wives, their children, their grandchildren, God keep them covered under the blood of Jesus. We ask now, God, that you just be into setting, we invite your Spirit into this place, Father God, and we give you the praise, the honor, and the glory for all that they do for the Kingdom of God. We thank you, we praise you. It's in Jesus' name that one say amen.
Amen.
Bless you.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Hill. Additions, deletions, Commissioners, we, staff has requested a couple items on consent, and we'll get to those at that point. They've also asked to move item twelve G one, which is the utilities update on Blue Cypress Lake, to be part of the public hearing ten A one, the moratorium discussion. And are there any other additions, deletions to the agenda?
Move as amended.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. We do have a presentation this morning. It's a presentation and proclamation designating the week of July twenty-third through twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, as Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week. And Commissioner Zork will be presenting this. And I think we have a couple folks from the Marine Industries here this morning, so if y'all want to come on up. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning.
Commissioner Zork.
I will read the proclamation, then we'll hear more about your upcoming event. This is a proclamation designated the week of July twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, as Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week in Indian River County. Whereas, on Saturday, July twenty-eighth, the Marine Industries Association of the Treasure Coast, in conjunction with the Florida Inland Navigation District, will conduct the eleventh annual Treasure Coast Waterway and Cleanup. Whereas, this event will attract approximately nine hundred and fifty volunteers who will participate in cleaning up the waterways of Indian River, Martin, and Saint Lucy Counties. And whereas, twenty designated sites throughout these three counties will serve as registration and disposal sites for the volunteers to work out of. And whereas, numerous waterfront homeowners associations have been recruited to clean up their own waterfronts. And whereas, in two thousand and seventeen, over seven tons of trash was collected from approximately a hundred and twenty-five miles of waterways, with an expectation of a significantly larger amount to be collected this year, with an increased volunteer effort. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, that the week of July twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, through July twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, be designated as Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week in Indian River County, and all citizens are encouraged to use this occasion to foster appreciation for the Treasure Coast waterways and assist in their cleanup efforts adopted this seventeenth day of July, two thousand and eighteen. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you Commissioner. Thank you for proclaiming July twenty-second through the twenty-ninth Waterway Cleanup Week. We're happy to be partnering with the Marine Industry Association of the Treasure Coast and the Florida Inland Navigation District, to bring the waterway cleanup to Indian River County for its eleventh year. There are twenty-eight cleanup locations on the coast this year. Six are located in Indian River County. Last year, we had a hundred and one volunteers participate, picking approximately one ton of trash here in Indian River County. That's down a little bit. We averaged, for the last ten years, we had two thousand and fifteen just in Indian River County help clean up. They cleaned up a total of twenty-one point five tons of trash out of our waterway. As time goes on, awareness increases, and other waterway cleanups are happening, so the levels keep going down of what's out there, and that's good news. Someday, I wish I don't have to stand in front of you. I thank you very much for the proclamation.
Great. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. (applause)
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I have to go buy a boat.
Yeah, I can fly, you know, right over my rocks.
You could do.
You know, when you go buy a boat there Commissioner, you can fly the frog in a boat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can buy a season pass to a sports event.
(laughing).
Oh.
Yeah.
Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup.
Well, I have to display it on my office, that's it.
Oh, come back, come back, get the digital. I know we're giving you a lot all at once, here we go.
Making the guy work. Now we'll get the location.
Indian River County Cleanup Sites include the McWilliams Park Boat Basin, Riverside Park Boat Ramp, Sebastian Main Street Boat Ramp, Sebastian Inlet Marina, the Beryl Beach Municipal Marina, and the Wabashlo Causeway Boat Ramp. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
Approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Fleischer. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five zero. Under informational items, we do have the venue event, the calendar review, and I would like to take a minute just for a plug. At my normal monthly meeting in South County at the Intergenerational Center, this coming Monday, August sixth, hosting a forum with all the school board candidates, so everyone in the public is invited to come attend that. We'll start at five-thirty at the Intergenerational Building on Oslo Road. And we do have a retirement. William Kramer is retiring from Rhode and Bridge Division with nineteen years of service, so Bill, we really appreciate all the work you've done for the citizens and residents of Indian River County. Anything else there Commissioners? Okay, moving to consent agenda. Staff has requested that item H, which is a temporary construction easement to Datapath Tower, and item M, Lost Tree Preserve, request for final plat, be pulled for additional discussion. Commissioners, does anyone else have anything they wish pulled for additional discussion? Is there anyone in the public that would like a consent agenda item pulled for additional discussion? Okay, seeing none Commissioners. We have a motion from Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Adams, to approve consent as amended. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. We'll go ahead and take item H. Bill?
Thank you. Bill DeBrawl, on behalf of the County Attorney's Office, this is just real simple. I've been advised earlier this week, after the agenda had already been released, that Datapath Tower had moved. Their address is now seventeen hundred sixty-sixth Street North in Saint Pete, and that's the only change to the agenda item, and I'll make that available to the clerk as far as that change. Staff.
Thank you, Bill. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Flecker, oh, excuse me. Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Is there any public comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. Mr. DeBrawl, you'll take care of item M, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are just two changes to the plat of Lost Tree Preserve PD Phase One. One of the changes is a dimension that's located on page five of the plat. The other is on the face sheet of the plat, I'm sorry, it's on another page of the plat, that would be page six, and there's an addition to, there's a easement added there, a conservation easement that's added to the plat. Otherwise, the plat remains the same, and we're asking for approval as well on that.
Thank you, Bill. Commissioners, questions of staff? We have a motion from Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Adams, to approve. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you, Bill. Move on to our constitutional officers. Item A, the Florida Department of Health, in Indian River County, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, fee schedule. Good morning Miranda and Cheryl.
Good morning, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present to you our eighteen-nineteen fee schedule for your consideration. Just as a note, we really have not increased fees for environmental health since two thousand and eight. For our regular fee schedule, we have not increased fees since two thousand and thirteen. And for, in terms of the regular fee schedule, there's only one change, and it's in terms of a fee for our immunization form for those people who aren't our clients. We just have a fee for filling out that form. It's fairly minimal. That's the only other change you see in the paperwork we submitted. When we look at our budget, this decrease in revenue from eight point eight million in fifteen, sixteen, to now in eighteen-nineteen, seven point one million, we've had to really do an assessment of our fees and look at where our fees aren't covering the costs. And in environmental health, it's pretty substantial in terms of our expenditures exceeding our revenue. Now, what I can tell you is that every year we do a workload analysis in environmental health, and we look at really how we're using our people, and if we're efficient. And what we've seen is because of what Cheryl's done in environmental health, we are absolutely efficient. But as you can understand, as the building services have really picked up in our county again, we're seeing increased demand in environmental health as well. And it's really made us look at where our fees are. We've been able to keep those low as long as we could, but now we're at the point where we need to look at an increase to help cover our costs. So, at this point, I'd like to turn things over to Cheryl, so she can present to you the specifics on our specific programs and where the fees are at. She's, we've done an assessment of our surrounding counties as part of this fee increase to ensure that the levels we're setting are comparable. But I'd like to turn things over to her.
The IT person disappeared.
He's right there, Cheryl. Back in the box.
It was sent to Dory.
Scott, it's under the backup for the agenda item. It's the last attachment.
Oh, you're so good. Thank you. And are you gonna turn, or should I? Okay. Thank you. So, these are the proposed Indian River County Environmental Health Fees for the Florida Department of Health. Public Health Service Fee Authority, Chapter one fifty-four of the Florida statutes, authorizes the Board of County Commissioner to establish public health services fees. Local fees will remain in Indian River County and will help offset the costs of public health services delivered here. Local fees support local programs and state programs with fees that don't cover their costs. General, generally, state and local program fees have not been increased since two thousand and eight and do not cover costs. Unlike other counties in the Treasure Coast and Region Five, Indian River County has not changed county fees on, has not charged county fees on facilities or activities with existing state fees. And I just wanted to kind of give you some examples of the types of services that we provide and what categories that they fall into. The first category are state mandated programs by statute that have fees or revenues attached to them, including septic, group care actually does not have any state fees associated with it, but food hygiene in group care facilities does. Public swimming pools, public water systems, well surveillance, mobile home parks, migrant labor housing, tanning facilities, body art, biomedical waste, and beach sampling. Examples of local fees with local, local programs with local county fees are our well construction program, our complaint program, of course, Environmental Control Hearing Board, housing and public buildings, plan reviews, pay C H, demolitions, grease traps, our certified drinking water lab, hazardous material response, small quantity generators, our Sharps Collection Program, and training that we provide to the public. Increased fees for services will allow state and local revenue to be allocated to unfunded mandated programs that are a part of these programs, such as preparedness and response, epidemiology investigations associated with foodborne, waterborne, mosquitoborne illness, and other environmental illness and poisonings, rabies control, and lead monitoring. So, what we first did was we, we looked at all the local county fees for state and local program activities were reviewed in Indian River, Martin, Saint Lucy, Brevard, Volusia, Lake, Seminole, Orange, and Osceola Counties. Average of local county fees were calculated as a benchmark, and proposed local fees are actually lower than other counties. Coding reports were reviewed to determine, to determine program costs, and just as a point, certain complaints and enforcement actions are not reflected in specific program activities. We estimated the increased revenues expected with the proposed local county fees. Some proposed new fees, such as late fees, reinspection fees, or doing work without permits, or operating without a permit, are a deterrent and difficult to estimate. So, we're hoping that with those, with increases in those types of fees, it will be an incentive for people to pay on time and to, to comply with conditions of violations found during routine inspections. So, what I did was, I have a slide of each of the programs with each of the proposals, and the first program is well construction, which is a local program for the construction of wells on properties, both for residential and commercial use. And the Board of County Commissioners went into a delegation agreement with us and the Saint Johns River Water Management District in nineteen ninety-five. We were actually the first county in our area to establish well permitting. And as a result of that, our fees are substantially lower than the other counties. So, what's being proposed is a slight increase in irrigation wells by a difference of twenty-five dollars, so raising it from fifty to seventy-five, and from a drinking water well, from seventy-five to a hundred and ten, a thirty-five dollar difference. And there are some new fees on here, but there's relatively small numbers, and that's when a well contractor is having difficulty locating a well on a property, and we go out there and help them establish a location for a new well. We would like to charge a fee for that, and also to charge for reinspection of a, of a well when they don't do something according to code, such as inadequate routing, not bringing it above, not putting the proper tags on it, things like that. And also new fees for operating without a permit or doing work without a permit, a double permit fee. And then sign-off letters, which that's a new thing that the bank has been asking for, so we go out and, and look at the property or in-house look, and we, and we produce paperwork for the banks. The next one is public water systems, which are limited use, smaller public water systems that are non-D U P systems. And we spend a lot of time in this program, and, oh, I should go back. So, as, as part of this, you see that our fees have not increased since nineteen ninety-five, and that we have a projected loss of fifty-six thousand dollars in this particular program, which is specifically supported by, by, by local fees. On the public water system side, this is, this has a state fee associated with it, but the state fee doesn't cover the cost, and we have a projected loss of around, close to fifteen thousand, fourteen nine sixty-six. And if you look, we're suggesting a new fee on the, the, the annual permit, and, and that fee is a proposed fee of fifty dollars. And some of the fees are the same, the one, some of the fees that are, are going up are associated with maintaining a Neelac certified drinking water lab, and we actually have to pay for an outside auditor to come in from outside of the state, to come in and audit us. So, we're, the proposal is to increase our drinking water sample analysis from twenty-five to thirty-five dollars, additional ten dollars to help offset the cost for those audits. Our public swimming pool program in this county is, is a very big program, and right now we have a projected loss of thirty-seven nine sixty-one. And we go out and we monitor public swimming pools that serve five or more living units. And the proposal is to increase the, the, the fee with accounting fee of fifty dollars for the different types of pools, and pools over twenty-five thousand, under twenty-five thousand, and exempted pools, which are associated with condominiums that don't have short-term rentals. Also, the proposal is to increase the reinspection fee. So, we go out and do a routine inspection, and we find a violation, and we tell them we're coming back on a certain day, and we go out on that certain day, and they're still not in compliance. So, we give them one free reinspection, and then if we have to go out there the third time is when we would charge the fee. And to increase the swimming, the late fees on all our programs to be equivalent to fifty dollars rather than twenty-five, we feel with our, our low late fees that, that people aren't paying promptly, and it's putting a burden on us to have to go out there and actually cite them in violation of the code and, at time for our clerical staff. And this is our big one, our septic tank program. We're, we're currently projected to lose over a hundred thousand dollars this year, one hundred, one hundred, one hundred eighteen, three eighty-two. And the onsite sewage disposal program has to do with construction permits, but also annual operating permits, and also with the businesses that provide those services. And the suggestion is to, to increase the, the existing state fees with accounting fee, and you see the fees are outlined here, for new construction permits and, and our sixty dollars on modifications are similar to new, and then fifty dollars for repair, and then an additional fee of twenty-five dollars basically for mound stabilizations or additional inspections, and adding thirty dollars to the existing abandonment fee. And then, when people apply for variances, we put a lot of work into those, and we don't retain any of the money locally. So, we're suggesting a seventy-five dollar charge to do that for not just our work, but to pay for the expedited mailing and express mail up to the state to, and the copying that's needed to make the copies for the variance review board. Also, managed inspections, we're just suggesting thirty-five dollars on that, and then the companies that do the service, an increase of fifty dollars. And one thing that is a decrease on here, which the septic tank contractors approached me approximately four months ago, when I started in two thousand and four, we developed a fee for timed inspections actually to, to discourage them, because when I started, we were issuing so many permits, and we didn't have things under control, and we didn't have the staff to do timed inspections. But our contractors really want timed inspections, and they wanted it to be at a reasonable fee. And by doing timed inspections, it's actually to their advantage, because they can do the installation and keep the heavy equipment at the property, and we meet them at the time that they, we have certain slots that they take for those timed inspections. And if there's a problem with their system, we stay on the property for up to an hour that they can fix things, and then they can immediately cover it. And this is really essential on repairs, where they might have exposed sewage in, in somebody's yard, where they have children and things like that, where they want the system covered. So, the, the recommendation is to reduce the fee from one fifty to one hundred dollars. Local plan review fees, this is what we do for the county and the cities as part of the plan review processes for the building department. And previously, we had eight different fees that were kind of hard to handle, and the suggestion was that we have set fees. So, the suggestion now is, instead of being on the low end of twenty-five, to make minimal plan review fees that take less than an hour, thirty-five dollars, and if it's over an hour, the seventy-five dollar fee for a major plan review for a more complicated project. And we can usually determine those upfront and let people know, and we can invoice them for that. So, we're projected to lose about twelve thousand dollars on this local program this Food hygiene has a state fee associated with it, and we have about a nine thousand dollars annual loss. And again, we wanted to bring those late fees, that the common late fee is fifty dollars for not paying on time. And we bill forty-five days ahead, and we're really good about if, if, if something gets returned, calling people, emailing invoices, we do an exceptional job of, of that. But the recommendation here is to increase the annual operating permits by forty-five dollars, which would be a county fee.
Cheryl, can you go back to that, please?
Sure.
And I'm not sure if it falls under this or not, but if you, if you have like recurring events, like the Downtown Friday or the Farmer's Market, do these apply to them or not?
We don't regulate them at all. They're, it depends upon the, the type of event, but most of those are regulated by the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. And some counties, they have specific food service ordinances where they do, do regulate them, but we do not do that.
Okay, thank you.
Group care facilities, this is a state mandated program that has no state fees associated with it, and we currently have local fees in this program. So, for example, we already have a plan review fee of seventy-five dollars, we're keeping it the same. Usually, group care facilities, like A L Fs and those Usually group care facilities like ALFs and those sorts of types of businesses fall into this category. And those plan reviews take us hours to do. Voluntary group care inspections, we don't, we haven't gotten very many of those since two thousand and ten with the reorganization of the Department of Health. But ALFs, we currently charge fifty dollars. It's recommended that we go up to a hundred. And we inspect those at least once a year, usually more often out there on epidemiological investigations. We've had several noro outbreaks, we've had a scabies outbreak. We spend hours in these facilities. And public schools and private schools. And I'm not recommending that we charge public schools a fee, but the recommendation is that we charge a seventy-five dollar for private and charter schools. And then a late fee for group care. At this time, we're only charging twenty-five dollars.
Ms. Chairman?
Commissioner Solari?
Could you explain the rationale for that? For charging the private and charter schools, but not charging public schools, especially considering that charter schools are public schools?
I don't really have a good rationale. I just didn't want to, I thought, other counties have had difficulties and haven't charged the public schools. So I kind of didn't want to be the first one to do that. Again, I looked at what other counties were doing and used those counties as a benchmark. So I guess that's my best excuse. And if you feel like, I guess, we shouldn't be charging charter schools either or if you think that I should also charge public schools, I mean, I'm receptive to any of those comments.
Commissioner Zork?
And on that same, I think looking at your fees, and these are the county portions is, and even with these revenue increases, you're still going to have shortfall. That some of them, and I'm not into raising fees, but I am in for covering your costs. And I know in the building department, we've had to look at, you can't process a payment, have somebody review an application, type it, issue it, enter it into the system, send somebody out in the field and inspect it for what some of these fees are. I mean, they're still very reasonable for the amount of work it takes. You know, many years ago, we would issue a over-the-counter fence permit, let's say for fifty dollars, but you couldn't perform all those steps. So somebody was, somebody else was subsidizing those fees. So in general, I agree with Commissioner Solari. Schools should be, from a health perspective, I think, treated equally. You charge them all or charge none.
I'm with that. I mean, and I let it be Ms. Dunn's choice, but I can't see the distinction between them. So if you want to charge them all fee, that's fine with me. If you want to charge a minimum fee, that's fine with me. I'm not going to tell you how to do it, but I just.
Well, that's why I'm here before you. I rely on your judgment on this, so.
Well, now we're in trouble.
Yeah. So I mean, if you'd like me to relook at that and.
We could probably make the decision today, I would think.
And then migrant labor housing. And statute, it actually indicates if they go a year without a critical violation, I'm not allowed to start, charge any of the established state fees. So unless it's a brand-new facility with no history, they've been having their fees waived because of the statute that's in place. So these fees are very minor compared to our cost. And we inspect migrant labor housing, basically for every quarter they're open, we have to go out there twice. And prior to them opening, we have to do a pre-opening inspection. And typically, there's reinspections involved with that because they have to be violation-free prior to opening. So this is a very complicated program. So I have recommendations of fees between fifty, seventy-five, a hundred dollars. It's not enough to even put a dent in it, but it's something to get them there to say, to respect what we're doing and have to pay something. Mobile home parks, this program, we're actually making a little bit of money on, but it's deceiving because we're out in mobile home parks not just to inspect them, which we code our time to it, but we're out there for different reasons. I.e. rabies, garbage complaints, other things that don't get coded to this activity. So it's not a true reflection of the time that we spend in the mobile home parks that are in our county. The recommendation is just fifty dollars per state operating permit. And then the plan review is the same and then of course, an increase in the late fee. This program, housing and public building, hazardous waste, environmental assessments, these are all county functions. And I don't, I'm not proposing any local changes in local fees. We have local programs supported by local county fees and county general revenue. Department of Health staff respond to hazardous waste spills in partnership with emergency management staff. Department staff periodically inspect small quantity generators to ensure hazardous materials are not disposed of in the landfill or dumped down the sewer system. And we inspect those facilities and we report the inspections in Oculus in the DEP website for you all. And these fees have been in place since two thousand and four. And again, the expenditures exceed our revenues and we have a projected loss of twenty thousand dollars. But we understand that we get general revenue and this is something that we should be doing to protect the county and your utilities. We also do demolition permits and grease traps. And again, there's no proposed charges and these are local programs. Department of Health staff inspect properties and have hazards debated prior to the county building department issuing demolition permits for the county. And Department of Health staff inspect and monitor facilities that have grease traps. And our fees have been in place since two thousand and four and expenditures exceed revenues projected about six thousand two hundred and ninety-three. And again, we're not recommending any changes in these fees. And these are just other fees that we have in place. And that is an overarching thing that if we catch somebody operating without a permit, that it's a double, the initial fee is double the permit fee. Standard non-compliance fee for permitting after one inspection, as I explained to you in the swimming pool program. We want to have a research fee. There's a lot of people that ask for information from us. And we really haven't covered our costs and we wanted to include the cost in providing those, that research or records to include the staff hourly wage. Training, we do a lot of training for people and businesses and we don't charge fees. And then testing, rabies testing for animals that the Department of Health doesn't want to test, that they don't feel is a whole threat. That cost gets passed on to us. And the fee that I have up there is the cost that we're charged by the lab to process that animal that they would not have tested. And then in two thousand and eleven, we lost childcare programs. So it's on there, I've just eliminated that fee. And also eliminated the fee for the cost of Sharps containers for Indian River County residents because we do that in conjunction with the utilities department.
Ms. Chairman?
Commissioner Zork?
Under the childcare, if that's not under your jurisdiction anymore, who?
That's correct.
Who oversees?
Department of Children and Families. We go out to childcare facilities now, but only when there's an outbreak.
Okay.
And we notify them. It's just like in nursing homes and hospitals. We've lost jurisdiction in those facilities. So when there's an outbreak or we get a report of a reportable illness, we notify the licensing agency and then we're, we have the authority to go out to those facilities. But it's only under those parameters. We're not part of the regular inspection team unless they see an issue and they invite us to participate.
And then if you go out and you see a violation, can you, you have a way of recovering your costs? If you get called in, no?
But we do have the Environmental Control Board, which actually has authority over all those types of businesses, even not, even if it's not under the Department of Health. So in some instances, those types of facilities that have actually been fined and that revenue has gone into the general fund. And on the last page, I think that's important. So expenditures are exceeding revenues by three hundred thousand for the first quarter of environmental health. And if we have the proposed fees that I outlined in here, the estimates will bring in an additional one hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. And this projection was based on historical program numbers over the last three years. So the three-year trends of the number of facilities we have, the number of permits, we've been issuing, that sort of thing. And then it's our intention to reevaluate these fees on a more frequent basis so that we won't have to increase them by what we're proposing today.
Cheryl, can you go back to the slide that had the school item on it? So.
I mean, it's only seven hundred and fifty dollars. I mean, it's not going to.
Well, but the facility services, you have ten, is that just the private and charter schools? And would that be like thirty-five if you included all the public schools? Okay, so I would agree with Commissioner Solari and Zork that it should kind of like be an all or none. And if you are having to do those inspections, I would lean towards charging them all the fee. That seems to be the one thing we should decide. So I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion or anything to do that, but.
I'm going to make a motion. I have two things that I'd like to, I'll move that, make a motion that we go ahead and approve the fees as presented with two exceptions. One is that for the schools, we charge a fee to all schools. And the second one is, I think an annual basis is too often for a couple of reasons. I'm going to suggest both for your workload and for the confusion it will cause to people who have to update themselves each year to do it every two years. With those two changes, that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Solari, second by Commissioner Zork. For the clerk, did you get the two components of the motion? Okay, so the charge all schools and then instead of an annual update, update every two years. Okay?
Chair, just a question for Cheryl on that issue. So the second part of it was it's not going to be an annual, but a biannual review of the schools.
I think all the fees.
Of the fees.
All the fees, okay. And are there any requirements that you have to do things annually or in?
Well, we do our budget annually, so I was just going to look at what our costs are.
This is the first time you've updated these since like two thousand and thirteen for some and two thousand and eight for the others. They clearly don't have to do it annually.
Okay.
Oh, you meant the update?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Update what the fees are.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I wasn't intending to update them every year, but just at least look at them and monitor them more efficiently than we have been doing.
Commissioners, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Hang on just a minute, sir, we'll get to it. All right, so commissioners, any discussion on the motion?
Ms. Chairman, I just had a question. Cheryl, during the presentation, you mentioned that there would be a fee for testing animals that would otherwise not be tested.
Right.
What would constitute that election?
Yeah, sometimes, and I'm going to give you an example, like a person had a pet hamster that bit them and they wanted that tested. The Department of Health does a risk assessment of rabies to determine whether animals should be tested. We wouldn't test a hamster. So sometimes there's back and forth with the client. We end up sending it. It ends up being that we ended up paying for that hundred and ten dollars. So I wanted it to put in our fee schedule. If there's something quirky out there, we shouldn't be having to pick up the cost for that. So animals that are at risk that we determine or if there's human exposures, those get tested without question. I don't want you to think that we don't test those.
Right, I just wanted to clarify it actually for public information as well. So if there's no nexus, then that does not excite protocol. Then it's at the election of the individual who wants the animal tested and then you would charge a fee.
Right.
Okay.
And again, that's pretty cheap testing. And the other thing I do when people really want an animal tested is they can always take it to the animal diagnostic lab, which is in Kissimmee, run by the Department of Agriculture and have it tested for rabies now.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Any other commissioners have comments on the motion? Okay, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Okay, come on up, please, sir. No, sir, you need to come to the podium. If we could have your name and address for the record, please. That'd be fine, yes, sir, thank you.
Howard Humphries, seventy-three, forty-five, thirty-fifth court, live in Winter Beach. Just a question about schools. It seems like schools are really kind of tight. And if you're taking one part of the county and charging another part of the county, you're not really adding any revenue to the county. So why would you charge the schools at all? Charging the private seems okay to me. That's my comment.
That's very good, sir. I think it's more just accounting for where those dollars come from, making sure that the responsible agency or entity is paying their fair share. Good morning and welcome.
Joseph Powell, President of Black Swan Consulting, also Atlanta Co's building. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I support the motion and I agree with charging all the schools equally. That makes good sense. I've dealt with the Health Department on several occasions over the last twenty years. I found them to be very efficient, very cooperative. And a lot of the projects that I've successful at completing, I wouldn't be able to do it out there in cooperation. So I support the motion. And if there's any increases in fees, I think that new development, new construction, I think that's where you need to increase the fees to make new development pay for itself and try and get growth to pay for itself. I don't think it should be passed overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Solari, second by Commissioner Zork. All in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Miranda and Cheryl, thank you very much. And Miranda, just to let you know, at the budget workshop, Cheryl is a tiger up there just fighting hard for your budget. So I just want you to know she was really digging and scrapping hard for you.
I did hear that and thank you so much, Commissioner O'Brien. And Cheryl has done just amazing work in environmental health and we really do try to help everyone that comes to us when they come into our office. But thank you so much for your support.
And thanks for all you all do.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add one other comment or compliment to their staff. Recently, I've had the need to go in and take care of some permitting items. And it came from what I call the old Health Department, old school days, the Alan, the Bonnie, the Lori. Lori's still there. And you always wonder how is the next generation going to come in and how they're going to interact with the public and how things go. And I'd have to say pleasantly pleased and surprised how well things went. You've got some great up-and-coming new younger staff members that are doing a great job.
Thank you very much, I appreciate those comments.
Thank you. Next constitutional item is Indian River County Supervisor of Elections, Leslie Swan, who requests for assigned certification for security grant application. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Chairman O'Brien and Commissioners, Leslie Swan, Supervisor of Elections. As you've probably seen in the news, the federal government has allocated three hundred and eighty million dollars to the states. It's a federal election security grant and it falls under the Help America Vote Act. The state of Florida received about nineteen million dollars. Of that, a little over fifteen million is going to be divided between the sixty-seven counties. The Division of Elections notified the Supervisor of Elections that we'd be. The Division of Elections notified, uh, the Supervisor of Elections that, uh, we'd be getting these funds on June twentieth. There was a little back and forth. The Secretary of State said we weren't going to get them and then the Governor overruled. So that was on June twentieth. The applications are due tomorrow, only twenty-eight days to research the services and products. The services and products must be provided, received, and used only for the primary and the general elections. So that doesn't give us a whole lot of time. The Division of Elections informed all of, um, us, the Supervisor of Elections during a statewide conference call on June twenty-eighth, that information would be forthcoming on how exactly that we could spend these funds that were pertained in the grant. Of course, on Friday at four fifty, we got the email saying these are the things that you're allowed to spend on the grant. So this has been a real time crunch. Indian River County has been allotted a little over a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. This grant requires that we get certification from the Board of County Commissioners that we don't need any additional voting equipment before we spend the money on anything other than new equipment. And since you all were kind enough to provide us with a new voting system last year, we do not need that, any additional voting equipment. But this grant will allow, uh, the Supervisor of Elections Office to make substantial enhancements to thwart cyber attacks and greatly enhance the security to protect our physical building that we're located in. And it won't be any additional cost to the Board of County Commissioners. The state is picking up the five percent match. As far as to our physical building security enhancement, we're going to add outside cameras at the front entrance of the parking lot to alert staff of potential threats from incoming persons with a video monitor installed inside the building visible to all office staff. Because the ladies at the front desk, you can't really see who's coming in, uh, when you're sitting at the front desk. We're going to install a locking button for the front doors to prohibit entrance from persons posing possible threats. Enhance security for interior building access entrances with new encrypted FOB keys. We're going to install FOB access panels on all warehouse doors with automatic locking mechanisms. Install additional video surveillance cameras in the interior buildings to monitor staff visitors and intruders. As far as cybersecurity goes, we are adding additional backup servers, additional firewalls, additional USB drives for exclusive use with our election management system, multi-factor authentication for our office computers to confirm a user's claimed identity. And so access is granted only after successfully presenting two or more pieces of evidence. We're adding cloud storage backup, uh, twelve ballot on-demand printers, toner, and ballot paper to print ballots in case there's an emergency. Three external hard drives to back up our voter registration database for redundancy. Uh, we're going to replace twelve computers, uh, in our phone bank with the latest operating system because those are ancient in, um, the phone center. Fifteen replacement, um, UPS or battery backups for critical systems and cybersecurity training for our staff. At ten o'clock today, an agent from the Department of Homeland Security will be conducting a security review at our office and will make any additional recommendations. The specifications for this grant stipulate that all funds have to be expended and the services and products in place by November sixth, the general election. Since the election staff is fully immersed in the two thousand eighteen election cycle, this will be a balancing act for us to implement all of these new security enhancements and keep laser focused on the election tasks associated with conducting two elections in the next hundred and twelve days. But since the Elections Office is now classified as critical infrastructure, these grant funds will allow the Supervisor of Elections to implement critical security measures without adding to the Supervisor of Elections budget and to help ensure our county's voter registration voting systems are protected from intrusions. So, um, here I, we basically need as part of the grant you to sign off that we don't need any new voting equipment. And we're grateful to this grant, but we're not really sure why you have to spend all this money in such a quick period of time. And we did repres, uh, reach out to Representative Brawls' office and she did contact the state and they said since they were paying to match, they were kind of setting the rules and the guidelines. So we have to go with that.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of, um, Ms. Swan?
No, move approval for certification.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fletcher, seconded by Commissioner Adams.
A different one question on the math. You, it started out as three hundred and eighty million nationally and then Florida was going to receive.
Nineteen million, of which they were taking fourteen, uh, four million, I guess, for cyber experts, maybe in Tallahassee. So then it was fifteen million. And what they do is each county gets a baseline of fifty thousand dollars and then based on the voting age population, they have a, a factor of how much additional funds you get. And I'm not complaining. This is great to get this money. It's just the timeframe and we're in the middle of an election cycle. So we're going to do all we can. Poor Gary, my IT manager, he's a little flustered right now. And we were very lucky to get some quotes for the security company because they're slammed with all these schools that are upgrading and hardening their schools. It's really hard to get people to come out. And I don't know how I got the quote that fast, but, so it's kind of a thing. We have to sign it right away and get it all installed by November sixth.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Any other commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher, seconded by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five, zero. Thank you, Leslie, and, and I'll get that signed today and get it to you and you can send that in.
Okay. Thanks a million.
You bet. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, I think the next item might have a lot of discussion and public comment. So we're going to go ahead and take a very brief break. We'll come back at ten oh five for the public hearing. Services, the Conservation Lands Capital Projects and Grants Update. And Beth Powell, our Conservation Lands Manager, good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Beth Powell, Conservation Lands Manager for the record. Today, um, I would like to bring you a Conservation Lands update with all the projects that we've been working on in addition to a potential grant opportunity. I find it, it unfortunate that all of our people left because we have some great things to share about what Indian River County is doing on conservation lands that benefit habitats and species and recreational opportunities and in the Indian River Lagoon. But this will be, uh, able to be seen by anybody at any time and we'll make sure that the PowerPoint presentation is posted online as well.
Beth, I think if you proposed spreading a little bio solids on some of our conservation.
It would have stayed.
We'd have a big crowd the next week.
I could get some more attention. Yeah, that'd be great. Um, but.
Take care of what you're doing, though.
It'll be on somebody's blog now that we're doing it.
I do. Thank you.
Just care and concern.
And all honestly, uh, honesty, we do have a lot of projects going on and this is largely in part to the commission really helping to funnel some funds our way. Um, as you know, I've been with the county for over eighteen years and we are moving at a rapid fit pace toward getting a lot of our conservation areas open to the public. So it's a really exciting time to be in conservation lands. And probably the next two years you see me, I'll be wearing a hard hat. So, um, your backup, uh, information in the staff report has a lot of detail and a lot of information. I just wanted to put that out there so that you could see, um, what kind of projects we're working on and have an idea of where we were at with those projects. I've broken those into three different sections to try to make it a little bit easier in case anyone's asking for updates or things like that. But basically, um, what we have, uh, we have fourteen active conservation areas with improvements being completed at this time. Of significance is Anson, Archie Smith, Boat Club Island, Lost Tree Islands, Round Island South, and South Oslo Riverfront. All of these improvements have either docks or boardwalks and things that will formalize, um, public access improvements to those conservation areas and in most cases make those formally open to the public with those improvements. As a, for instance, um, we completed the mowing of the trail, um, uh, for, uh, Round Island and moved it upland. We saved significant amount of money by doing that instead of building multiple boardwalks. And that's one of the projects that right now is in, uh, for permitting or will be in for permitting by our contractor soon. So there's things that we're constantly looking at, ways to maximize our funds, um, also to still have the public benefit there. And actually the, we rode through the trail and it's really, really a beautiful trail. So if you have an opportunity, maybe when the boardwalk is completed to go down and visit that, I know it's at the south part of the county, but it's truly a beautiful conservation area. Next, we have, um, projects that are funded and approved that but they're in design, permitting and engineering. Those include our, I want to call them like our famous three, um, Halstrom, Craigel, and Jones. But we also have, um, the Oyster Bar Marsh, which is also in engineering design at this time. That's being headed up by the Indian River Land Trust. We met last week, finalized some of the landscape plans that were necessary to move our county permit along. If you have any questions about, uh, any of those areas, um, Halstrom, for instance, is about thirty-five percent complete with engineering design. Um, we're kind of taking our time with that one because we did submit the land and water conservation fund grant and it'll be a while before we hear about that. So that's kind of now in the back burner, but we'll continue to make steady progress with that. And obviously anytime we have grant opportunities, um, sometimes projects get catapulted as soon, as much as we can take advantage of, um, funding, you know, as those come available. But that land and water actually has a very long, um, span, uh, you know, it's not a short time period. Our Craigel Conservation Area, we anticipate permits, um, will be, uh, submitted tomorrow, actually. And Oyster Bar, uh, again, we just finished the landscape plan. And Jones, just a quick highlight because that is so, so many moving parts on that one. Our engineering plans have been, uh, submitted. Our wetland is in design. We're waiting contracts from, uh, the Division of Historical Resources, Resources and the Indian River, uh, National Issuary Program. Both of those contracts, uh, grant awards will come to you for consideration. Dylan, obviously, will take a look at them. Um, and then we'll be bringing those. Hopefully, we realize that there's a gap over the summer that makes it a little bit more time sensitive because these grants are one-year grant, uh, periods. So we need to get those to you as soon as possible, especially with the break, but we are moving forward. We've already reached out, um, to get, um, architectural design services, um, for the fruit stand. So we're already in those processes. You're going to see a lot of different things coming your way, uh, for approval. We also have, uh, we're creating the specifications for the cottage repair. That would be through the FEMA project worksheet. And, um, also beginning to start doing our public outreach and education in order to make people aware of, of the coming improvements to the conservation area.
Beth?
Yes.
Jones, Pierre, you had a, a quick phrase. Wetlands being designed?
Yes.
Could you elaborate on that a little bit more because I don't think the public would understand what's really meant by that.
As a matter of fact, I'm going to slide through all of these slides because I just had a feeling you might ask that question. So this is our conceptual, our latest, um, wetland conceptual, uh, not conceptual design, but our actual engineer, um, plans. Again, this is, um, currently in design and this is the most recent one that we're, um, preparing for our permits and, uh, county building permits, et cetera. Uh, so you can see what we have here. Uh, it does not show the, um, the area to the south that will be constructed to bring the water in because we're still having a little shifting, um, occurring with our public, uh, use improvements, the parking, et cetera, and the driveway there. Um, so that's not quite shown yet, but you can see, um, it's actual engineered design. So that when we go to construct it, um, all of the elevations will be correct and each of these areas are, um, basically, uh, different water depths for the water and how the water will move from the west side of the property to eventually to the northeast side of the property. And then it'll actually have some, uh, additional cleaning, um, and nutrient removal. And possibly some of the highest nutrient removal will actually occur in the ditch on the north. And these designs are really, now that they're kind of being formulated and coming together, this is a really important time for us to start communicating with the public, particularly our homeowners to the north and the south. So they understand, uh, what we're doing. That we're taking all measures to make sure that, um, all of our, um, project infrastructure stays on site and that they understand the mechanics of how the system will work. Uh, we know at some point in time, there's going to be a high, uh, water event, um, like there was, uh, with Hurricane Matthew. And we want everybody to have a clear understanding that this wetland is not providing additional water or additional impact in the event of a storm surge or other flooding type event. And the only way we can do that is really to get with our homeowners and to talk to them and to work out all of those questions and maybe some fears or, uh, excitement that they might have about the project in a personal environment while the plans are being, uh, developed and prior to bulldozer showing up on site. I mean, I think that that's the best, you know, uh, an ounce, what is it, an ounce of, um, prevention's worth a pound of cure. So that's going to be our approach there.
But for the rest of the county residents, basically, if I understand it right, we're taking polluted water from the lagoon, running it through this wetland system, which is basically a passive remediation system. And then by the time it gets back to the lagoon, it'll be a lot cleaner than it was.
Exactly.
So this is another project, a small one, but, and the main purpose of it may not be for TMDL remediation, but it's, it's designed to help with the estuary problem.
Absolutely. It's, um, everything that we're doing now is multifaceted. There's, um, public recreation benefits, there's habitat benefits, um, and then there's the water quality benefits. And this is a perfect example of where we're combining all of those things. This, uh, wetland feature, in addition to the nutrient removal, is going to give people a place where they can come and they can visit. And every time they show up, they'll be seeing something different. Seasonally, they're going to see different birds there. They're going to be just, I mean, it's going to, it's such an exciting project. It's very accessible to the public. Um, we're going to have trails and boardwalks that make it to where if you can only walk a little bit, you can get to see the wetland. And if you want to walk, you know, a mile, you can do that as well. So that's what, part of what makes all of this very exciting. But you're absolutely right. That's how that will work.
And Beth, while we're on this, I, it's my understanding there's going to be like a, a trail or something in the green area that'll go around the entire wetland area?
Yeah, um, it's a, not actually the green area because that's actually part of our wetland unless you want to get your ankles wet. We encourage everybody to stay out of the wetland. Um, this is the engineer plan for the, um, wetland. So it doesn't incorporate, um, I think the trail is on there, but it, no, the trail is not even on this particular plan. We have included, is there a pointer on this, Scott, or something I can use? Okay. Thank you. So, um, one thing that we're incorporating, um, is we're going to add, so the trail, you're right, the trail's going to come through here like this and, um, actually you can see it, but it, I'm sorry, it's very, very light. It's right, this little gray line. So you're right, it kind of is in the green right there. We've also added a trail right through here. If my mouse is picking up, okay, good. Right through here, there'll be another trail. So you'll actually be able to walk half of the site or the full site. And then we're proposing a boardwalk somewhere along here, this side, and also somewhere on this side as well. So that you can get into the marsh area and you won't be, um, you know, looking to the east. Just to, just different vantage points to be able to see the deep water versus, um, this part, we want to do a lot of education about how the system is working. So that when you get out of your car and you show up, you're like, oh, this is man-made? Wow. I mean, because hopefully nobody would know unless they were educated the fact that this is a, a man-made system.
Okay. So my question, I, I had heard that some of our buffer codes may impede the ability from the trail to see into the, the wetland area. Is, is that been resolved or?
Uh, we're still working on, on that at this time, um, in terms of what plant species will be utilizing. And I don't think it's, um, because the permit was just, uh, submitted, I'm not sure we'll have those comments exactly back, um, quite yet. But there are some interesting, um, uh, provisions that the county has in terms of wetland, upland interface and how those have to be landscaped. So we'll be working through those. Our goal was that people will be able to see the wetland and it wouldn't be buffered by upland. Definitely not upland trees because that, that presents a problem for the operation of the system. If you have detritus coming into the system, then you're, um, not only that, but also if you have to create wetland, then we would be taking up space, um, to create uplands in our wetland. And then you lose some of the functionality of, you know, the system.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I will swing back to here. You're getting to see all of my slides. I didn't want you to do that. It's supposed to be a surprise. Okay, so the public use improvements, that finishes up that slide. Um, any other questions on any other conservation areas on this slide? So the third, um, the third section that I have for you is the status of projects coming for approval. These will be coming up soon. We have Harmony Oaks, uh, conservation area, boardwalks, uh, for that site. We actually did an RFP for that and did get, did not get any bids on that. So we'll try again. Sebastian Harbor Preserve, super exciting for that one. We have approximately three mile. We have approximately three miles of trail that have been created. You could literally go out and walk it now if it were dry. You wouldn't be able to get through the wetland areas unless you have galoshes on, which is why we've created a site plan and modified some of the areas for where our wetland boardwalks will be. We're working on the permitting for that right now, and then we'll be doing an RFP to get the bids for that. I think we have six boardwalks for that site proposed. It's going to be an absolutely gorgeous site. Beyond that, we'll be looking to do a site plan approval with the City of Sebastian for a small parking area on the southwest corner of that property. And let's see, that's pretty much it for that site unless you have any questions. And then we'll buy a scrub conservation area. We have an observation boardwalk that'll complete the site development there. It's a requirement for our FCT Communities Trust, Florida Communities Trust grant, and once we complete that, that site will be substantially complete. So moving on, we have other updates and projects. We are very excited, day before yesterday, no, that would be last Friday, I guess, we found out that the Oslo Riverfront Conservation Area Wildfire Management, the HMGP grant application that we submitted was funded. That's a $65,000 project. The county's match, and I apologize, but I have a number that's incorrect in your backup, the county match is actually $16,250, and $48,750 will be federally funded. This is to create a nice fire break behind the Forest Park subdivision on the Oslo Riverfront Conservation Area. This has been dire need for many, many, many years. So all of the homeowners call and ask us when this project is starting. They're very excited about it. We let them know early on about the project and what to expect. We have had the boundary surveyed and will be completing that work. More than likely, we may wait until January of next year, and the reason being is because we have to really watch some of the access points in and out of that area in order to be able to get the equipment in addition to some other things. Obviously, we'll move forward with it faster if we can. We're still waiting on notification for the countywide wildfire mitigation project. We have gone out for RFP for architectural design services. These will be utilized in order to do some of the design plans that we need for our restrooms, our pavilions, restoration to the Jones House, for instance, Craigel, and the Halstrom Barns at some point in time. And then lastly, we have, we're notified on, I think, the seventh about a National Fish and Wildlife Federation grant through the National Coastal Resilience Fund. This opportunity provides $30 million awarded annually. This is their inaugural year. The county match, or the match for a grant, is a one-to-one. The funds are available relatively quickly in terms of federal funding, and we would have availability for that according to their RFP as soon as November 2018. So some important points about this particular fund is that it's really focused on enhancement of resilience for coastal communities. So we qualify for the grant in that we're a coastal community. Their focus is on reducing regional threats related to the impacts of storms and floods. So there has to be some connection to resiliency in regard to drought, extreme weather conditions, and things like that. And we have 18 months to complete what I would, or what we're proposing today would be a project planning and design project. They also have implementation projects, and those funds are even, they have more funding available for that, and you have three years to complete those projects. So it's not, it wouldn't be unusual for us to complete this grant cycle and then to turn around and apply for an implementation grant for, through the same process. And I think I went over some of this. So for project planning, the funding available is $100,000 to $250,000. The funds can be utilized for the preparation of cost-benefit analysis, conceptual designs, engineering plans, stakeholder engagement efforts, detailed cost estimates. And the goal is to create plans to meet environmental review and permitting requirements. And I think it's important to note at this point in time, it's very hard to get grant funding for engineering design. That's not something that's usually available. Most of the time, you have to front that funding upfront, and then you can pretty easily get grants in, in order to construct something, you know, because there's a lot of uncertainty with engineering and design and planning and things like that. And you're not committed through this grant to actually build your, so for instance, if you went through the process and you did the engineering and design, you're not under any obligation to actually build it. So our thought, when Wendy and I were thinking about this grant and where it might seem an applicable conservation area, immediately, we thought about the Lost Tree Islands Conservation Area. And I know it seems like a lot to a big bite. We're doing three acres at Jones and looking at 500 acres for Lost Tree, but in order to be competitive for this grant, the grant, the improvement needs to be large. They're probably not going to, they're going to be getting lots and lots of grants from, throughout all of the nation, and so I think in order to be competitive, it would be a waste of time to do anything on a smaller scale. Our thoughts were that Lost Tree, again, is large enough, there's 508 acres of upland wetlands submerged land. I'm just going to give you a briefing of that in case, because that's not in your, you know, purview right now. It's kind of, Lost Tree's been on the back burner for a long time. We purchased it in 2002 with grant assistance from the Florida Communities Trust. So we do have those special management conditions and obligations that were required to meet over a period of time. Obviously, FCT is not breathing down our neck right now. We're moving forward on a lot of different projects, but that commitment is still there. We have an interlocal agreement with the City of Vera Beach and Indian River Shores also from 2002, and so we may want to look to them to find out if they're interested in partnering with us or kicking in some cash or something like that. The conservation area, the northern part of it's located in the Indian River Malabar to Vera Beach State Aquatic Preserve, which I think makes it more significant, and I think our funding ability is going to be higher on all levels regardless of if we apply for this grant or we apply for other grants. It's a combination of natural and spoil islands, which I think is important to note because when we talk about restoration of our conservation areas in general, we're talking about taking it back to what it used to be. And spoil islands conversation continually is, you can't take it back to what it used to be, otherwise you'd have to take all the spoil and dump it in, you know, the lagoon. But the benefit of having that opportunity is that we have a blank slate in many cases. Obviously, any natural communities that exist, like our mangrove shoreline, we want to keep those. But the predominant area within most of these islands, especially the three outer islands, so the three outer islands are Duckhead, Ermen, and Hogshead Island, those islands have so much spoil deposit, they have a lot of exotic species. They have carow wood, they have Australian pine, and they have Brazilian pepper. So those, when we see that as a, you know, an ecologist or biologist or a land manager, if it's degraded and it's had, it's rootural, then it becomes a blank slate for whatever we want to create. And to me, that's a really exciting thing. And 10 years ago, we might not have had the foresight to do what we might do today. As a matter of fact, I know we wouldn't because 10 years ago, we were looking at planting, you know, mangroves and PVC pipes. Do you see that anymore? Of course not. Indian River County has a beautiful mangrove shoreline. That is not something that we're lacking in, but what we are lacking in are estuarine wetlands and ecotones that come off of those, you know, mangrove shorelines. That's basically extremely rare at this point in time. We don't have salt marshes and things like that. And so with the islands, we're given this great opportunity to go in and to create through pretty serious engineering, again, something that's sort of on the scale of Jones Pier, but on a much, much larger scale. And the benefit to this system, I'm gonna, I might be moving faster than I, I get excited, sorry. But the benefit to this is that this system will work during extreme weather events. For instance, during floods and during droughts. It's in the middle of the lagoon. You may have to pump water into it, but you're not going to find the water. You don't have to. If the ditches or other situations are lower, you're not going to be like stressed out that your wetland's going to die because the lagoon will always be there. And so you have the immediacy of the islands being in the lagoon, and that's definitely a big benefit. So over the years, you know, our approach has evolved, and we're super excited about that because now we can look at multifaceted benefits, the public recreation benefits, the wetland treatment of our lagoon waters or other waters, and then we can also have improved habitat quality. If you were to drive over the Merrill Barber Bridge or even the 17th Street Bridge, most of our islands are all covered in exotics. And the Spoil Island Working Group has been reinvigorated, and they're going to be working on some of those, some of those projects, but I think it's going to be a slow process. So we love the idea that we might have some immediate effect. The other thing that Lost Tree Islands has for us is that in 2007, 2009, we received a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Grant, and that created a master restoration plan for the outer islands. This was a very rudimentary master plan. It went into detail to understand what was happening at the islands, what was there, and then a conceptual plan. Again, we've grown leaps and bounds in terms of our approach. No longer are we thinking about just mowing exotics and then planting native hammocks or something like that because those are a lot of overhead, it's a lot of maintenance. The islands are really difficult to get to even for staff or contractors or anybody, so it's very expensive every time you mobilize, takes a lot of time. And we found through some of the projects, we've had four major projects on the site, and what we found is that just treating exotics doesn't really get us very far. We spent a lot of money, and as soon as you let that go or you have a storm event, you end up, yeah, you end up right back where you started again. So what we are looking at would be to create an adaptive restoration plan that takes into account sea level rise, drought, and other extreme weather conditions, including hurricanes. It would increase recreation and ecotourism opportunities like fishing, kayaking, boating, paddle boarding, wildlife observation, and environmental tours. This is right next to the marina, so you have this, you know, we know that people get to a conservation area and they get out of their car and go 500 feet. Well, on the river, it's even more challenging. People aren't going to go very far. So this being so close to the marina, I think, has so many benefits. You could literally kayak or paddleboard to one of these islands without very much effort. And then we have, obviously, the environmental and lagoon enhancement opportunity. So for this, we're really looking at maximizing our enhancement efforts with added benefit to water quality through natural systems. The most important thing about this is, once it's constructed, it's going to require very little overhead and maintenance. These systems work naturally. If they get flooded, they're okay. If there's a dry spell, they're okay. We have example of this that we did for the Spoonbill Marsh Project, and I would get you out there, if you'd like to go, we could go visit that. I think our boat is broken down, but we can go with mosquito control, they're super helpful, and they'll let us jump on their boat anytime. But it's really worth staying because that site had some land contouring, we created some estuarine kind of tidal streams through that, and it's really, really beautiful. And then you can look at that in comparison to where we've just treated exotics over a period of time, and there's such a stark contrast. It's really, I think that our, our vision for how things should be accomplished maybe upfront would cost a little bit more, but in the long term, it's going to be more sustainable. And then also, your water quality benefit is sustainable as well. We also have the opportunity to add some bivalve habitat in our design, which I was super excited about, and everything else I talked about. So this is a baby lease term. Some of the exciting things that are happening include the Spoil Island Working Group. Like I said, they've been reinvigorated. We went to the meeting about a month ago or probably less than that, and we actually were sitting in the room with Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, Florida DEP, mosquito control, Army Corps of Engineers, Brevard County, Martin County, St. Lucie County, Coastal Conservation Corps, I mean, a group of experts who I've been knowing for a really long time. And over the years, like I said, our approach to how we restore habitat and our approach to water quality issues, which really weren't an issue back then, you know, almost 20 years ago, those are now at the forefront. And what's really interesting to me is that projects have been successfully completed, projects have been unsuccessfully completed, and now we have that data that we can pull from, and we also have all of these people who are awesome resources, even potential funding partners in the future, to be able to do some really great on-the-ground work. As an example, I just wanted to show you, I know you can't read this slide, and that's okay. If you want more information, I'm happy to provide it to you. So this is an example of a project that was completed in 2005, and this must have been like completely like, somebody's like, I have this great idea, and everybody would have been like, yeah, you're crazy, because it was so ahead of its time. I mean, really ahead of its time. But what you can see from this slide, just barely, and my mouse went dead, Scott? Yeah. Yeah, it's not working. Sorry. But basically, what you can see, is it working now? Okay, thank you. Okay, so what you can see from this island here is this was the original, it's basically like any Lost Tree Island, it had a mangrove fringe, et cetera. They actually took and cut out this section here, they did oyster bed, oyster beds in this area, and then I think they did a high marsh right in this area. And the, again, the benefit to this project is we have so much research and data as to what happened when they did this project. And this could be, you know, one of the things that we can go to and we can pull information from and see what worked, but this was a very, very successful project, and it was, again, multiple concepts all coming together on this tiny little spoil island, and very successful. Again, I'd be happy to share this with you or any other information that we get from FWC as well. And I believe that basically covers everything. So again, this is a, oh, my screen went dead. Oh, thank you. So basically, you have two things that staff's recommending at this time. We wanted you to look over the, the public use improvements that we're doing, and if you had any questions for us. But also, for the grant, we wanted to just make you aware of the grant opportunity. It is due August 9th, and we're, we're always ambitious, even with short deadlines. I think the benefits to this particular approach in this, for the planning and design would be, we'd have a comprehensive approach rather than a piecemeal, design-as-you-go type approach to the islands. There's an opportunity to design for incremental progress as funding is available. So we would really take a really close look at the engineer plans, and we'd be directing the engineer to break it into smaller doable pieces where we can find funding and apply it. Not only that, but those small incremental pieces would be prioritized so that they have the highest bang for their buck in terms of particularly creating the wetland systems, and so all that would be prioritized. We would know exactly what we're getting out of each of the segments that we'd be completing. We'd have the production of permit-ready plans. That's such a time-consuming thing. Even if we start now on it, it might be two or three years before we could actually start breaking ground. It incorporate public use improvements that build ecotourism opportunities and improve quality of life for residents. Also, at the same time, we want to, there's, there is a mechanism through this grant cycle to engage the community, to build support, and to build enthusiasm for the project. And then, again, we have greater grant funding opportunities with the plans in hand, and again, it's rare for funding to come about for planning and design.
Well, Beth, you know, I, I think it's great, and you know, the fact, I know you and Wendy are working very hard on these projects, and thank you both for your efforts. It's exciting to see the, the conservation land starting to get some momentum now, and you can really see this train, you know, is starting to really roll on the tracks now, so I'm very excited about that. Want to commend both of you for all the hard work you're doing on this. It's, it's pretty exciting to see these things come, and we can, you know, go to the public now and say, yeah, we bought the lands, and now we're making them available to you, so I, I think that's critical. So thank you for that. And I guess you're looking for the board to give you direction on whether to proceed with the grant application?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, but even before I make the recommendation, I, I want to say that that, that was a beautiful presentation. They're very robust, and I, I don't think he stopped for oxygen to present it. But then again, that's no, you and Wendy are no stranger to that.
We kind of work that way.
We've worked with you before.
We're blue.
But with that, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see if we can get some of this presentation on the website. I, I think that it's got tremendous value for the community. But with that, I'd like to move staff's recommendation to fully support the RFP for the resilience fund as well as the grant application for the Lost Tree Island Renourishment, and hope that it's very successful so we can bring it forward.
Thank you.
And you and Wendy will have very little idle time in between. And you and Wendy will have very little idle time in between.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fletcher, seconded by Commissioner Adams, to direct staff to move forward with the grant application for the National Resilience Fund Grant RFP. Any discussion on the commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Is there anyone from the public in the audience?
Well, we... You did draw a crowd.
See, and then all in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Beth. Look forward to the next update and moving forward on these other projects. And good luck with the application.
Thank you.
We already did utility services departmental matters. There's no commissioner matters under solid waste disposal district approval in minutes of May 22nd, 2018. Motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. And now, we come to one of our favorite things, is the quarterly recycling update. And Stephanie, good, is it still morning? Yeah, good morning? No, good afternoon. Welcome.
Just did it.
Yes, afternoon, so I was going to say good afternoon. So, thank you, Stephanie Fonville, the Recycling Coordinator for the Solid Waste Disposal District. It is that time of year, our quarterly recycling update. This is our third quarter. I have a lot of information to share with you today. It's kind of split into two sections. One is our kind of regular quarterly update and what's going on with the DEP goal. And then also, I have some results from the online survey that we did, that we asked residents about the recycling program and the garbage program. So, that's my second half. So, as I always like to start, taking a look at our recycling tonnages over the months for the third quarter, that's April, May, and June. I'm happy to say that this fiscal year, we're at 1,821 tons is about an average of what we've seen coming into the landfill. And this is slightly higher than it was last year, and it was slightly higher than the year before as well. So, we are still continuing to see an increase in the recycling coming through, so that's always great news.
Stephanie, real quick, going back to that, though. All three years now, we've had the single stream, is that correct?
Yes, yes. We started in October of 2015, so this represents the last, all the years of single stream that we've had, and it continues to increase as we continue, so.
Great, thank you.
So, of course, the big question is, how are we doing with the DEP 75% goal by the year 2020? So, this chart, the first line, is looking at the recycling goals that the state of Florida has. Each year, they have an intermediate goal that we're supposed to be reaching. So, for calendar year 2017, that goal was 60%. So, the next line is the recycling rate for the state of Florida as a whole. And for calendar year 2017, they did, they did not quite meet their goal. They had 52%. This is actually a slight decrease of what they had last year. They did give a explanation for that. They said that there were some tonnages that they were, they did not think were being accounted for, so they changed a little bit of how they were looking for those tonnages that were going into the garbage. And once they did that, they did find more, and that percentage did go down a little bit. So, when they were giving us our recycling rates, they did tell us that it might have gone down. But I am very excited to say that that was not the case for Indian River County. Our recycling actually went up, so we are officially at a 64% recycling rate, which is just fantastic, considering in 2015, we were at 34%. So, each year, we've seen a great jump in our recycling percentages. We took a look at how we ranked compared to the other 67 counties in Florida. And if we look at overall recycling rate, which includes renewable energy credits, like waste-to-energy, Indian River County would be ranked number 10 out of 67 counties, which is great. And if we strictly looked at traditional recycling, we excluded that renewable energy, those waste-to-energy credits, then Indian River County is actually number four out of 67 counties. So, we were really, really excited to see that. We got really excited in our office that day. So, just again, yes, we were really excited. So, just a little reminder of how this is calculated. This does include all of the waste that was generated in Indian River County and all of the recycling. So, if we take that 64% piece of the pie and we pull that out, we have two sections. We have the private sector, which is basically the private companies, your scrap companies, a couple of non-for-profit. C and D companies is a big one. That private sector composed about 85% of the recycling that's going on in Indian River County. And then the public sector is essentially the single-stream recycling that we see coming through the landfill, everything that we collected at the convenience centers, those kinds of things. That's the public sector, and that composes about 15%. So, I did want to point out that we did see an increase in both sectors in recycling. Last year, it was, or in 2016, it was 168,000 tons approximately of recycling. This year, it was 277,500 tons. And in the public sector, whoops, we went up from about 44,000 tons in 2016 up to 49,000 tons in 2017. So, we saw an increase in both of those areas, which was also, again, very exciting when we were pulling those reports together. So, that doesn't mean that we're going to stop. We always try to see what we can do and how we can help educate, and I threw this in here because I'm an educator. So, five things that we as residents can do, essentially to reduce our waste and help Indian River County reach those recycling goals, and also hopefully help keep some of those materials out of the recycling that aren't supposed to be there. So, big emphasis on reduce and reuse, and then, of course, recycle is our third option whenever we can. So, use your reusable bags when you go to the stores. Also, if you do use those plastic single-use bags, bring them back to a participating grocery store or convenience store. They do have a recycling program for those. Do not bag your recyclables. Those are a big, big problem at the sorting facility. So, plastic bags, when you can avoid them, great. There is an opportunity to recycle them. And actually, I just went to a conference last month, and there was a plastic film recycling organization that was there, and they informed us that things like bread bags and actually plastic wraps that come on paper towel rolls, and also the 24 packs of water, those are actually recyclable along with those plastic shopping bags. So, whenever you see those plastic shopping bag containers outside of a store, you can actually bring things like bread bags and those wraps and recycle them there as well. So, that was really exciting to hear. Their main stipulation is that they be clean and dry. So, that's another opportunity to recycle, to keep those things out of the garbage. Bringing your, yes.
That one.
Yes.
Yeah, in the morning, we get a newspaper, and it comes in a colored plastic bag. I've been sticking that in with the plastic bags, but it's a good time to ask if that's, if the color makes any difference.
As far as I know, the color does not make a difference. So, as long as it's the same type of material, they will accept it, and it's clean and dry.
Great, thanks.
Yep. So, the fourth little tidbit is to bring your packaging peanuts back to UPS store or pack mail. We can't take Styrofoam, but they do have a recycling and a reuse program there. And then, of course, utilize our convenience centers or our collection events. We will take all kinds of material that won't go in those blue carts. So, any heavy metals or anything like that, we have seen a couple of those going into the blue recycling carts. Go ahead and bring them to our convenience centers or our collection events. So, this past quarter, we actually had three collection events, which partially explains why I've been so busy. So, the first one we had was the paper shredding event on April 7th. We collected about 19,200 pounds of paper that was diverted from the landfill. We had about 540 cars. This is a little bit lower than what we saw last year in this, in our paper shredding event in the spring of last year. This event happened to fall on the weekend after the Easter holidays, so we're guessing that a couple of folks had gone home, which may have accounted for that decrease. But honestly, the turnout was still great, and the amount of material we collected was also still fantastic. For the first time this year, we tried doing a tire amnesty day, where we opened up the convenience centers and the landfill for one day to accept up to 10 tires for no, at no cost. We collected about 9,420 pounds of tires, which is not bad. But actually, through that whole process of advertising and speaking with the mosquito control district and the sheriff's department, we actually learned that Indian River County is quite clean as far as tires go. So, it had actually been cleaned out previous to this event. So, we did bring in some more tires that were out there, but at this point in time, Indian River County is really doing great in terms of waste tires and keeping those out of the community. And then, our third collection event was the electronics and household hazardous waste event. We collected about 4,700 pounds of electronics. We collected an assortment of pesticides and paints, a couple of paint tanks, and we had about 170 cars coming through. Again, this was also a little bit lower than what we saw in the summer of last year. We had moved it up. Last year, we did it in August. This year, we did it in June, just because of the intense heat. And also, it did fall on the same day as the Hurricane Expo, and I believe the Vera Beach Wine and Film Festival. So, we know what the dates are, at least for the Hurricane Expo for next year, so we'll make sure that the two don't overlap. That could have been a factor, but still, we were excited to get that out of the landfill. And then, a shout-out to our raffle winner. Ms. Suzie Jenkins won our raffle prize of a laptop that was donated by our electronics company. This year, it was A1 Assets as our new electronics recycler. So, they came out this year for that event. So, that kind of summarizes our things that have been going on this past quarter. One thing I did want to take some time to tell you about, I thought it might be interesting. We did send out a mailer to every person in Indian River County, so hopefully, everybody did receive it. Give some information about what can and can't be recycled. Also, give some information about why it can't be recycled, or in the blue carts, at least. But the other thing that we had on there was, we directed people to an online survey on our website, and we offered them some incentive prizes, a $100 gift card that was donated by Target, and a $25 gift card that was donated by Countryside Citrus. We actually received 995 surveys were submitted to this, so that was, that was pretty exciting. We weren't sure how many we were going to get, but we did get 995 residents that went online and filled out the survey. So, a little bit of a breakdown, out of those 995 entries, the majority of them came from unincorporated county. Indian River County, about 45%. But I was happy to see that each municipality was represented. There was at least one person from every municipality that participated in the survey, so that was great to see. We got about 30% from City of Vera Beach. 22% of the entries were from the City of Sebastian, and then we did get some entries from Fellsmere, Indian River Shores, and then one person from Town of Orket did fill it out, so thankfully, we can say it's represented. One of the questions we asked on the survey was whether they use curbside service or whether they use the convenience centers. About 85% of them used the curbside service, and about 15% used the convenience centers. So, our follow-up question to that was if they did use the convenience centers, that 15%, so about 152 entries, we gave a couple of reasons and asked them essentially, why do you, why do you prefer to use the convenience centers? So, the number one reason that they selected was convenience. They lived close to a convenience center. It was easy to just drive over there and drop off their material. The second reason that they gave, the second most popular reason, was cost. Some people felt that the curbside service was too expensive for them. And actually, some of them did clarify that they had such a small amount of material, they didn't feel like that was worth it to pay that cost to have that picked up. And then, the third reason, we did offer an other section, and we offered an opportunity for them to write down what their other reason was, and there was a variety of them, and some of them chose not to fill that out. But about 23% said other. One of the reasons that we did offer, basically as a reason for using convenience center, we wanted to see if anybody switched over to the convenience center because they felt that once-a-week garbage was not sufficient for them. So, we did put that as an option. Only about 4% of the folks that filled out this survey said that that was the reason they didn't use the convenience centers. But interestingly, when I looked at where those came from, most of them actually came from the City of Vera Beach and the City of Sebastian, who actually has twice-a-week garbage. So, I don't know if that was a confusion on their part, or if that, you know, is something that maybe we can make clear to them, but if we took those out, then it was about 1%.
Mr. Chairman, on the same line, the City of Vera Beach's garbage cost is about, I think, $16 a month, which is quite a bit more. I know they're two times a week or one time. When you saw the two expensive, did you look at any of those to see if any of those were in the City of Vera, which they're still paying on their electric, their master billing?
I didn't pull out that number, so I don't have it right now, but I can easily look that up.
It'd be curious just to spot-check a few of them.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely a great idea. I can check that and send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, some of the other questions that we did ask was if they felt that they were recycling more, now that we had switched over to the single-stream program. About 80% of them said, yes, they felt they were recycling more. About 77% of them said that, yes, they felt like they had less garbage as well. So, that was, that was great to see that at least the majority feel that they are recycling more. We have a little bit of feedback from our residents. We did ask if they lived in a multifamily home, if recycling was available. About 124 residents identified that they were in a multifamily community, and about 90% of those said that recycling was available. So, that was another positive. We weren't sure how multifamily was doing, and now we have a little bit of an indication. We also asked if recycling was available at their place of work. About 42% said, no, there was no recycling available. 25% said, yes, but it was essentially just at the curb, so they had curbside pickup, but there was nothing in the building. And about 33% said that, yes, recycling was available in the building as well as at the curb. So, that gave us, it was an opportunity to kind of see if anybody had some feedback on their place of work and get some data there, so. And then, one of the most interesting questions, I think personally, was we were asking if they had certain types of garbage issues within the last six months. So, out of the 95, 995 entries, the majority of them reported that they had no problems or that they didn't feel that the question was applicable to them. The main garbage issue that people cited was excessive odors. About 13% said that they, they did feel that they were experiencing excessive odors. And there were a few reports of either excessive occasional maggots or foraging wildlife. So, we gave all of these options that people could choose from in a multi-choice setting. So, about 5% said they had excessive maggots. About 6% said that they had occasional maggots. And also, about 3% said that they had some foraging wildlife. So, they did have the option to check multiple of these. So, essentially, there were 995 entries, but this kind of represents, any time somebody clicked that particular issue, then we tried to kind of put that into a percentage. So, particularly, I was, I was trying to disentangle whether the switch to once-a-week garbage, people felt was really causing problems in our community. So, I was looking to see if excessive odors and excessive maggots was making up 30, 40% of our, of these people's, our residents' garbage issues. So, that's particularly what I was trying to get from this. But again, once I looked into the data a little bit further, I found that the complaints for particularly odors and maggots were, again, coming from areas that received once-a-week service and areas that were receiving twice-a-week service. So, for example, for the, for the odor complaint, there were about 136 complaints in total. We're looking at everybody, all 995 entries. 136 of them cited, yes, I have an odor issue. But if you just looked at once a week, there was only about 89 residents that said that they had odor issues. So, maggots is similar. It was 123 when you looked at all the homes, but it was only about 78 when you looked at once a week. So, percentage-wise, there are a little, the percentages are similar, but if you break it out between folks that had once-a-week garbage service, then we actually saw that they were both having some issues there. So, then, I felt it was another educational opportunity. So, this is my last slide, I promise, but I put down some tips for a cleaner garbage container to hopefully help with some of those issues. The first and foremost is placing the garbage in trash bags and also tying that bag securely. So, I have seen some people will put garbage in trash bags, but it might be partially open, it may not be sealed, and you're still getting that odor issue, and you're still getting those bugs that are getting in there. So, first and foremost, put it in your garbage, put your garbage in a trash bag and tie it securely. The other tip that I usually give to people is, if possible, avoid putting particularly potent foods, such as meats, in your garbage until closer to your collection day. So, if you know that you're going to make a glorious chicken dinner, may, and you know that your garbage pickup day is on Tuesday, maybe don't make that dinner on Wednesday. Just kind of try to plan that out a little bit. In our household, we actually have a compartment in our, in our fridge where we put food in there. So, when it's collection day, we'll just take that out of our fridge and put it directly into the garbage, and it's only there for one night. The other thing, too, is to occasionally clean your garbage container with soap and water, especially if some food gets out from maggots. The process that I have looked up and found is remove all the garbage from the can, rinse the bin with boiling water, use one part vinegar and two parts warm water to kind of clean it out, that'll help disinfect it. And also, you can use vinegar, you can use peppermint essential oils or bay leaves, and that helps to deter flies and maggots, so that helps a little bit, too, to keep those out of there. And then, for odor issues, we use ground cinnamon. I have a little container of ground cinnamon I just sprinkle in there. Also, things like coffee grinds, use dryer sheets or cat litter, absorbs odors, that might help. And also, they do sell odor-controlled trash bags and trash can deodorizers. I've never tried those, but they may work as well.
There is also, for those who put having this done on their honey-do list, but it doesn't get done, kind of like around my house. I get it, I get it. Poor Jay, I know.
Yeah, you're throwing Jay under the bus here, or what?
I resemble that.
There is some services, some very entrepreneurial people in our community that will come out and clean those for you, for a nominal fee.
Yes, actually, I have done that as well, because we moved into a new house, and I, I thought they were gross, and I didn't want to clean them, so I had somebody else come and do it. And they did a great job, they did a really good job. So that is another option that's out there if you don't want to do it. And I promise that is all I have, so if you have any questions for me, I am happy to answer them, anything.
Stephanie, it's always a, a great presentation, and congratulations on the sixty-four percent recycling rate.
Thank you.
That is very exciting, and Commissioners, any other questions or comments for Stephanie?
Eleven percent to go.
Eleven percent to go, we're getting there.
Right.
But thank you very much, and I, I assume we're still going to schedule future shredded paper pickups and hazardous materials and all those cleanups, and you'll keep us informed when those dates are coming.
Yes, yes, absolutely. The next one that would be coming up would probably be the paper shredding event, which we typically do in November, so we haven't set the date yet, but that will be coming, and that'll be probably on my next update.
Great. Well, just, again, awesome, awesome work, and it's really cool to see this progress, and so keep up the good work.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, that concludes the agenda. Is there anything for the good of the public? Seeing none, we're adjourned. Moratorium ordinance, this is legislative in nature. We did vote to move up the utilities item, which is just an informational update on Blue Cypress Lake. So I'm going to have the county attorney start this with his presentation. We'll hear from Vincent Burke, the utility director, and then we will have the public hearing and open up for public comment. So everybody that is here that wishes to speak to this will have an opportunity to do so at that time. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn this over to the county attorney, Dylan Rangel.
Thank you very much. On June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, after much discussion concerning the impact of Class B biosolids on Blue Cypress Lake, the board voted to direct the county attorney's office to draft an ordinance either prohibiting or at least establishing a moratorium on the land application of Class B biosolids. Pursuant to that directive, the county attorney's office, with the help of utilities and planning and public works, has drafted the attached ordinance, which establishes a hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium on the land application of Class B biosolids, and also the transportation of Class B biosolids for land application. I will note, also note that the county staff had a productive meeting with various property owners, and I want to thank them for attending that meeting. Additionally, the governor has issued Executive Order eighteen dash one ninety-one concerning algal blooms in various counties, including Martin, St. Lucie, and Okeechobee, and Palm Beach Counties. We are working with our lobby team to see if there's an opportunity or a way to include Indian River County as part of that executive order. Luckily, FDEP is already getting involved. As you know, Jennifer Smith, District Director for Southeast District, wrote to Mr. H of H&amp;H Liquid Sludge Disposal just last Thursday stating that, quote, "Halting your application of biosolids for the next hundred-and-eighty days is important to helping the department perform a thorough assessment of Blue Cypress Lake," unquote. Additionally, Kate Calt, Kate Cottner, is already talking with Representative Graw's office concerning potential legislation concerning the issue, and I spoke with Lisa Reineman, who is the executive director for the St. John's River Keeper, who has expressed her willingness to support our efforts and also finding legislators along the St. John's River to support our efforts. Finally, this Friday, there will be a Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council meeting in which the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council will be considering a resolution encouraging the state of Florida and local governments to prioritize the reduction and elimination of land application of human wastewater biosolids. So as you can see, there's been a lot of gains made over the past month. I simply recommend that the chair open the public hearing, take any public comment concerning the biosolid, Class B biosolids moratorium ordinance, and vote to, vote to approve the moratorium ordinance. Before we get into the public hearing, as the chair stated, I know Vincent Burke from Utilities has some information that he wants to present concerning the issue.
Good morning, Vinnie.
Good morning. The record, Vincent Burke, Director of Utility Services. We have a few slides just to go over based on board direction from the June meeting, and again, I'd like to take some time to thank Senator Graw's office. We have folks here from St. John's Water Management District, representatives. We have some interested parties and some public to give some comment after the short presentation. So here's a picture of what staff was able to take on Friday morning when we were invited out to Presley Ranch, and we just wanted to go over a little bit of information thus far. So the FDEP does have permitted land application sites for the biosolids. Biosolids definitions on the right-hand side, that is also captured in the proposed moratorium in front of you, is the solid, semi-solid, or liquid residue generated during the treatment of domestic wastewater, in a domestic wastewater treatment facility formerly known as wastewater residuals, or otherwise known as residuals. So you can see in the center part of the state, you have a conglomerate of biosolids, but it's just not Indian River County. This practice is throughout central and northern Florida. So in and around Indian River County, we wanted to identify where there are currently FDEP permitted land application sites for the Class B biosolids, including just the southwest of the Blue Cypress Lake, which is quite a large ranch, the Presley Ranch, under the FDEP permit that's, that's issued. But certainly, there's, there's a few sites. We did reach out to interested stakeholders on that Tuesday after the, the board meeting in June, and we did sit down with FJV, members from the Corrigan Ranch and the Presley Ranch and H&amp;H Sludge, the haulers that are bringing that material to Indian River County and to the north as well. So just a quick summary, that there is additional sites in and around Indian River County and in the surrounding communities outside of Indian River County that are approved by the So on the left-hand side of the slide, it's a little busy, but certainly, we wanted to make sure the board and the public were aware that these are regulated under the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. There are requirements included within the permit, certain storage restrictions, obviously. If you're next to a Class One water body, there's a minimum thousand-foot setback, there's application setbacks, crop use restrictions, cattle grazing restrictions as to when the cattle can and cannot graze after application of the biosolids, groundwater table monitoring. I know that in certain permits, if the groundwater table is twenty-four inches or less, then they're prohibited from applying the biosolids, which is reiterated in Director Smith's letter to H&amp;H. Must be noted that Presley Ranch has not applied biosolids since May of this year, and they actually wanted to do a voluntary cessation in concert with the proposed moratorium to, to be willing to investigate the matter further. But certainly wanted to make the department aware that this is not just in the, in the middle of the night where somebody's coming in with a truck to dump the material, but certainly that there's a lot of rules and regulations specifically tied to the Florida Department of Environmental Permit for the land application of Class B biosolids. There's required NMPs, which are nutrient management plans, that are required to be put together and filed with the department. They look at specific agronomic rates, which is the amount of nutrients that are in the biosolids versus the loading rate versus the uptake rate of the, the crops. Takes into account some of the soil types, it takes into account some of the, some of the precipitation that can occur, but certainly, the NMP has things, including but not limited to the soil characteristics, obviously the groundwater depth, the plant available nitrogen, the pan, the content of the, the dry tons of biosolids, some of the pH monitoring. Certainly, that takes into account the days that the biosolids is available on the land, certainly tilling into the soil helps as far as some of the, some of the uptake with the crops. There are some specific metals loading. There's also specific testing that the wastewater treatment plants are supposed to have in order to test what's actually in the Class B biosolids before it's transported for land The FDEP performs compliance inspections to look at the permit compliance, access control, whether or not there's proper signage. It's hard to see in the top picture of the site, but it says Class B biosolids are applied at this location, so that visitors and folks obviously know what's going on at that area. There's site restrictions and setbacks, as detailed in the permit, the operation maintenance plan. And it must be noted that the DEP went out to the Presley Ranch twice this year, once before the permit expired in February. I think we provided a copy of that report to the board. The DEP found the, the facility in compliance, and they issued a ten-year permit renewal. And then, the middle of June, the DEP went back out to the, to the, to the site, and also did a follow-up investigation to make sure that, I think, because of some of the attention that was being brought to this situation, they wanted to make sure that there was no adverse effects of doing some of the biosolids loading. Again, Mr. Presley had mentioned that they had stopped putting some of the biosolids down in May of this year, but the DEP found the compliance to be, the, the site to be in compliance rather in June of this year as well. So just a quick summary of what the board had directed staff to do back on June nineteenth, to gather some data from the existing monitoring programs in and around Blue Cypress Lake, obviously reach out with the regulatory agencies, including but not limited to the district and the FDEP. Certainly reached out to the property owners within a week time. They were gracious enough to take their time to meet with staff here at the county, to work with staff, and the legal department craft a temporary biosolids land application moratorium, which we're here to talk about today, and also to nominate folks to the FDEP Biosolids Technical Advisory Committee on it before the fifth of July. So what's been done, we did present some of that data last Tuesday with the historical testing that had been done by the various agencies, including but not limited to the DEP, the district, the Lake Watch, Orca, and some others that had provided that information. We did reach out to FDP locally, as well as Tallahassee, as well as the district, to see if they might be involved, and to alert them of, of today's public hearing. We did meet with the stakeholders on June twenty-sixth, and here we are today on the seventeenth for, for the biosolids. And lastly, we, we are still in, in discussions with interested stakeholders, both the property owners, the hauling company, and some of the regulatory agencies. We did have some pictures to show the board, just to show what staff had done on that Friday, June twenty-ninth, per, per board direction. Here's the, the recent letter of last week that was mentioned by the county attorney, doing a cease and desist or halting biosolids application at the Presley Ranch for the next hundred-and-eighty days. It was dated July twelfth this year, sent to Mr. Hawk, President of H&amp;H Liquid Slug Disposal, that has a contract to be able to move some of that material from the wastewater plants for the land application, and a copy of the ordinance that's proposed to be talked about today. So thank you to Mr. Presley, who did take time from, from his busy schedule to kind of bring staff up to speed as far as what they're doing out at the site. Must be said that the site looked very well-maintained. There were not large clumps of biosolids on there. In fact, there was healthy grass and cattle and deer, and some different bird types that were out there on that Friday, the twenty-ninth. We were fortunate to go off in the morning when it wasn't too hot. Here's just kind of a screenshot of the locations of where we were at, kind of to the west, southwest portion of Blue Cypress Lake, and the center part where they had an application field, large grassy area, behia, that's used for hay and/or cattle grazing, and then certainly, south of, of the, the Blue Cypress, there was some standing water, but nice canopy untouched, and certainly preserved in some of the agricultural components that were, were experienced out at the site. Here's just a few more pictures of some of the cattle that were kind of checking us out, and some of the internal draining canals. We learned that it was an old tomato farm out there at one time, and they had some shallow canals that would move some of that water around the facility. Here again is a closer picture of the required signage on the right-hand side of the screen, the Class B biosolid site, and on the left-hand side, just perimeter ditch retaining some of the water on site. So last but not least, we, we're brought to our attention that the FDEP actually has an impaired waters rule in and around the state, and specifically has divided up some of these WBIDs, or water body index. Some of the Commissioners may be familiar with some of the WBIDs for the Indian River Lagoon and some of the TMDL loadings, but certainly, the DEP has done some historical testing, which we brought to the Commission last week, and has sectioned out some of these water body indexes. So, you know, if a study is performed, we, we work with subject matter experts and the regulatory folks to investigate, I think, some of these areas of concern, and whether or not there are anthropogenic influences that certainly are, are having impact in some of the elevated levels of phosphorus that we presented. So last but not least, I'll stop talking and certainly turn it back over to the chair, but we recommend, obviously, opening up the, the hearing to have public comment.
Vinnie, before we leave this, could you go back a couple of slides, one where I, there was a, that ditch there, okay? So where, where does the outfall go? If these ditches get full, where does the overflow go to? Do we know that?
I, I don't have intimate knowledge of where. It's hard to show. I don't know if I can grab the cursor there. I apologize for the, the small area, but... So some of the ditches are on the south, southwest portion. Actually, some of the, the access road that goes to the Blue Cypress, here's the fishing camp, and apologies for the short area. Some of the water actually comes along here and then diverts and comes back this way. There are some outfall structures, I think, in the southwest portion. There is another outfall here, the Presley Ranch is, is really in this, this large vicinity here. But from what we're being told, there's not a direct discharge, per se, to the, the lagoon. It's kind of onsite. There are some canals that we would have to take a look at, identifying perhaps, with his permission, if we were to do some sampling, to see if there's, you know, certainly some elevated nutrient levels prior to hitting that area. So I'm just not familiar with that, just because of the short duration of time, but certainly that'd be something we could look into, look at. How does that water sheet flow towards the, to the lake, certainly during...
And then, can you go back to the DEP letter? So I'm a little confused here, because you'd mentioned that DEP did inspections in February and June, and in both times, they were found to be in compliance, but that third paragraph states that there was, the soil was saturated, there was evidence of ponding, and that this would be a violation of your permit conditions. I'm, I'm not sure how DEP in one sentence can say they're in compliance, and now in this letter saying that they are in violation. Do we have an explanation for that, or...
I will take a stab at it. I will think that they are doing a belt and suspenders. The permit specifically prohibits Mr. Presley, Presley Ranch, from applying biosolids if that water table is less than twenty-four inches, and I think they're reiterating to say, hey, if you apply biosolids, especially with the fact that we saw standing water, especially with the fact that your permit prohibits you from doing that, you will be in direct violation. But because they came out in February, they did inspection, because they came out in June, again, he had voluntarily stopped, or because of the wet season, applying what he told us in May of this year. So he has not applied any biosolids since May of this year. So I don't think he intends to apply. He verbally told us that he's willing to do a voluntary cessation in good faith, and I think the department is just reiterating what is in the permit to kind of put him on notice to say, if you apply, you will be in violation of your permit.
Commissioner, sorry, just one second, I'll get to you. And, and the last thing is, can we look up, I don't know if you have it handy, or if we could look up, when the, what dates in May were the, when the biosolids were applied? Because my memory is telling me that I think in May, we had about almost two weeks solid of rainfall, and I'd like to kind of know when the biosolid application was done in relationship to that, that period of rainfall. If we can dig up that rainfall data, I'd, I'd like to see that.
I don't have that now. In fact, I would have to look to see if some of the monthly applications are uploaded to Oculus, or if they're done on an annual basis, separated on the monthly times of when they do that. Certainly, we'll look into that, and we'll look at the precipitation.
Great, thank you, Vinnie. Commissioner Flory.
Ms. Chairman, one thing is, following up on your question to Vinnie about what caused the change in the inspections, I mean, there, in, in June, everything's in compliance, and July twelfth, well, later on, July twelfth, when FDP went out there, things aren't. I think two things ought to be kept in mind. One is, the county commission has basically put a focus on this item, and I think a lot of people have gotten engaged in the problem. I think that was one thing. And I, I talked with the executive director of the St. John's River Water Management District on Thursday, and I believe they deserve special credit for helping with this. They, I'd give them the credit for actually getting DEP out there last Thursday, and I believe people from St. John's and DEP went together. And I think that, you know, all agencies are kind of stretched, and they probably gave a decent inspection in June, but I think probably with the people from St. John's accompanying them, they were a little more perhaps aggressive in their inspection, so I'm happy to give St. John's the, you know, a lot of the credit for what's a decent interim result right now. And I also like to note that St. John seems to be particularly engaged in this issue, and I think that our goals are congruent in this, and I think that bodes well for the future. And also, in another item, the St. John, excuse me, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, which the Attorney Met is voting on a resolution on this Friday, and for people interested in the issue, they might want to go to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council website, because they have a good staff report, and the resolution is actually informative. And I just mentioned a couple of things from their staff report. One is that on the scale and scope of the problem, in the state of Florida, approximately three-hundred-and-forty dry tons of biosolids are, are produced in Florida, and about a hundred thousand tons qualify as Class B biosolids, which are not particularly aggressive. Class B biosolids, which are not particularly aggressively treated. Another 100,000 dry tons of biosolids are deposited in various landfills, and 140 dry tons of biosolids are further processed to become double-A biosolids, which are often then applied to lands. But possibly most interestingly is that, according to one of the studies that they quote, about 12% of both total nitrogen and total phosphorus imports will make their way into surface waters. So, if you put out 100,000 tons of total phosphorus, you might expect 12,000 pounds of that to end up in the waters of Florida.
12,000 tons, right?
12,000 tons, yeah. So, I think that's a lot of, I mean, I'm not saying those are the numbers, but I mean, that ratio, that relative ratio, and so that just tells us, but I think that their staff report makes good reading for this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have comments now for Vinny or Dylan? I'd just like to publicly, one, acknowledge and thank the landowners that are cooperating. I think it's the intent of this board that we're not looking to criminalize this or anything like that. I think we're very concerned about the nutrients, and I'm concerned about our county being used as a dumping ground for other counties. But certainly, we do appreciate the cooperative nature of the landowners so far. We look forward to working with them in the future as we work through this. I just want to publicly thank them, and again, reiterate that we're not looking to criminalize this, we're not looking to fine anybody or anything like that. We're just trying to get to the bottom of a nutrient issue and do its best for Indian River County. So, with that, this is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I do know we have Ms. Abby Johnson here from St. John's. I don't know, Abby, did you want to say anything at this point, and kind of start the public discussion, or? Great. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Abby Johnson. I'm the intergovernmental coordinator with the St. John's River Water Management District. I'm assigned to Belushi County, just to make myself known to the audience here. Let me start by saying thank you for offering us the opportunity to come and speak today. As you know, water quality is one of our core missions, so we are committed to collecting data and finding good, strong science to help make informed decisions, just both for us and for you. And I know the items that you have on your docket today are a local decision. Just know that we're on the other side of that coin, continuing to collect data and continuing to work with DEP, so we can take a more investigative approach or informed approach to assess the watershed. So, please know that you have our support via our core mission, and we're thankful to be here. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and if you would like to meet with us individually, please let us know. We had the pleasure of meeting with Commissioner Solari last week. I think it was a very informed conversation on both our parts, and we were ecstatic. That's one word. I know it's really odd to hear that in this situation, but for commissioners and council persons to reach out and have direct conversations with us is something that we are pretty happy about, when we have the opportunity to go ahead and share that information one-on-one, and kind of help make informed decisions. That's really where I'm headed. So, thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have one question for you. I don't know if you know, or if you can find out, but does your water quality staff have any, like an indicator, marker, that you can test for that would clearly define that, yes, this is, the source is a biosolid, like sucralose or other pharmaceuticals that are only found in human waste? Do you know, does your water quality staff have those markers that we can test for to see if it really is coming from biosolids?
I can get back with you. I think I know a part of the answer, not the whole, so I'd rather give you the full facts.
Sure. Okay. Great. Thank you. Commissioners, anyone else have questions for Abby at this time? Well, you'll be sticking around for a little bit, won't you?
Oh, certainly, sir.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? We do have two podiums. If anyone else wants to come up to the other podium here, we'll go back and forth. Good morning, welcome.
Juanita Baker, Sebastian, 522 North Blue Island Lane. Is there a way I can put in a picture, please? In the folder called "Green Algae" is her picture. So, I really want to commend the commission and all of you for getting informed, and I'm very impressed that after our last meeting, you contacted the ranches, and I want to thank the ranches for responding so positively to all of the issues here. And I think we can be on the cutting edge. I think this county is very unusual. Way back in the prior commissions, they said, "We need to control the growth." And when the huge condos on the beach were built, they said, "Oh, this is going to ruin the natural Florida and our views." So, they put a limit of 35 feet on this. And so, this is, well, I guess that was in Vero Beach, but this is countywide issue too, that have adopted that. So, what you do as a county commission really makes a big difference, and we appreciate your getting right on top of this issue when we learned of the effects. Now, this picture is from the Calusi-Hatchee River, yes, that was just sent to me last night, and I was, wanted to commend the DEP for showing that other slide, to show that biosolids are being spread around this state. And this is affecting, I understand now why the Calusi-Hatchee is this green and what's happening now. This is all coming to roost in our waters, and this is what our lagoon and all of our canals could be looking like, too. So, I have lived a long life, and I went to India for a year and lived there, and saw the conditions in the 60s. Then I went back, and we spent 13 years in Pakistan. And one of the things that was there, we also visited a site called Mohenjadaro that is 4,000 years old. And 4,000 years ago, that Mohenjadaro was on the Indus Valley River, but it had been left, the river changed, so it was out in the desert and was there preserved in buildings and everything. And what they had there 4,000 years ago was a modern sewage system that didn't, that removed the sewage from the cities. Well, this is 4,000 years later, and we have science, and we must have much information now to build other alternatives. I would like this county to have foresight to see that there are better ways to deal with sewage than putting it on our lands, or even putting it into the dump, that we could, there's a number of proposals that are thinking about more imaginative, scientific ways of utilizing this and turning it into energy. These might be a foresight that we could investigate. But right now, I would like to see you all stand up and say, and, oh, by the way, in living in these countries, we had to boil our water, we had to not eat any vegetables, because that vegetables absorbs what's on the land, and they use the lands as their dump, too, just like we have been putting in on our agriculture lands here. And so, you couldn't, that's why, when you go abroad to some of these countries that do not have modern sewage, you need to not eat your lettuce, you need to not eat even ice from the water that is coming from these, their water sources, because you need to eat, and that's why Coca-Cola kind of saved a lot of things around the world, because you could trust that. And people didn't, couldn't survive on Coca-Cola, but they could boil their water and go out and eat things. Well, not just Coca-Cola, I don't want to advertise them. There's others.
Okay, Ms. Baker, just want to...
But I wanted to emphasize that that is what can happen here if we spread this around, and could we have some more imaginative solutions and ban all of these? And I would like to encourage DEP to ban it across Florida. We need to find better ways to take care of all of these issues.
Okay.
And we don't want the slide like that to, we depend upon the tourists, but this is our health, and the health department needs to really focus on the health. Thank you.
Thank you. Just please, come up. Morning, welcome. Your name and address, please.
Good morning. Gary Ritter with the Florida Farm Bureau Federation. First of all, I would like to commend the council on, or the commission, I'm sorry, on their efforts. We highly support the moratorium that you've developed here in this resolution. We also, we also support DEP's position on developing a technical advisory commission to evaluate this throughout the state of Florida. I think Commissioner Solari had talked and reviewed the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council's summit on the biosolids, and I think Abby had alluded to the fact that we really need to look at the science behind this, and the young lady that was here that just presented to you all, I mean, obviously, the population is not going to get smaller in the state of Florida, so we have to figure out ways, in better ways, to deal with the biosolids in this area. So, you know, right now, agriculture has provided, provided alternatives for biosolids, and hopefully, you know, there's, University of Florida has been doing a lot of research on this. There's a, I can't think of her last name now, but Maria Salveria, Dr. Salveria, and Ona has been doing research on rangelands and biosolids. Dr. O'Connor up at the University of Florida in Gainesville has also been doing research. So, hopefully, some of that science will come out and help us make better decisions on how to utilize this material. Also, before I end this, I want to commend Mr. Burke over there. I thought that was an extremely thorough presentation that he presented. Good information, and I would definitely love to get a copy of that if that's possible.
I'm sure we can, yep.
All right. Thank you.
Sir, if I may?
Yes.
I used to be in citrus, and I just want to, for me, this whole biosolids issue has nothing to do with really agriculture versus, you know, it's not agriculture versus us, because I don't see any use of Class B biosolids as a, would be a valid farming issue. I know in citrus, when we'd get those big loads of fertilizer come in, but with every single load, we got an analysis of what was in the fertilizer, and we wouldn't put the fertilizer out if we didn't have an analysis. And I don't know this, but I would think that'd be the same for most actual crops that people would eat, that, you know, farmers, if they're getting fertilizer, would know exactly what the type of fertilizer they were getting and paying for was. And to me, as a farmer, it seemed like putting Class B biosolids on an actual crop would be a very risky business. So, I was wondering if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, certainly, certainly on crops, there are food safety issues that are gonna, you know, going to be involved in that, but I think, for the most part, the ones that I'm aware of were dealing with rangeland, you know, with cow-calf operations that might not be such a food safety issue. But I will tell you, for example, in Palm Beach County, when, you know, they were, they're dealing with a lot of equestrian animal manure, that they're trying to find good locations to deal with that. I know there are, there are those food safety issues, especially where they're growing leafy green vegetables in those areas, and those types of agricultural operations really don't want it spread there either. So, again, it kind of falls back on looking at our research, and how are we going to deal with the accumulation of these materials as population grows, and, you know, as we develop, even from the equestrian standpoint, I think they got somewhere around 28,000 horses in Wellington. So, you know, those are, those are all kind of issues that I think we're going to have to come to grips with in the future, and I agree with you. It really isn't us against them. It's like, okay, can we or can't we, and is the science supporting what we're doing with these materials?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Flasch.
I see that the conversation's gearing towards, and thank you, Doc, for the information, the conversation's gearing towards food safety, and food safety is extremely important. I mean, I have my water tested for my home garden, but we just can't have this gem at risk, as simple as that. And we have seen, taking everybody into consideration, but we have had a smaller lake, it's a little west here, Okeechobee, Lake O. We can't have that here. We will not have that here, and we will find out the nexus of what is being, creating this problem. So, we could talk about food safety, but we have to eliminate this threat, and it sounds like we have great cooperation from the state, and we're looking forward to identifying it, having it reported, and having it resolved as swiftly as possible, because one of the most painful things that I see, it's not in our county, is Lake O. And I don't know when that conversation is going to end, when it's going to get resolved, but we're going to have ours done far quicker, far swifter.
And I won't disagree with anything you said, and just, you know, as a sidebar, I actually live in Okeechobee County, and I am a city councilman for the city of Okeechobee. So, I value the health and ecology of Lake Okeechobee as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. There's been a couple mentioned of the DEP creating the Biosolids Technical Advisory Committee, and just for the public information, I did sign four letters of nomination. We, the county nominated both Commissioner Solari and Commissioner Adams. We nominated Vincent Burke, our utility director, and we had a citizen request from Dr. Baker to be nominated to that committee. So, we have submitted those nominations for that technical advisory committee. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to comment?
Can they take them all?
Commissioner, I don't know. We nominate them, we'll...
Pick one, or?
I have no idea how they're going to select that.
Sounds like a dream team.
Good morning, welcome.
Richard Baker, president of the Pelican Island Audubon Society, and actually, he served on the St. John's River Advisory Committee, the River Keepers Advisory Committee, too. And Lisa Reineman and I went out there to take some pictures, and this is one that she sent you. She's the river keeper, and you mentioned her dialing, her interest in her letter that she sent to you all. I had one question. You're talking about banning all deposit for the next six months in Indian River County, not just the Presley Ranch. Is that right?
That is the proposed moratorium, but it would only be Class B biosolids.
And for the unincorporated areas.
And the unincorporated areas, yeah.
Right, but we're not just eliminating it to the Presley Ranch.
That's correct. It's all of unincorporated county.
Very good. Because I'm worried about, and I appreciate all the work you've done in getting this going, and you're on top of it, and it's wonderful. It's, this has been going on for six years, and we haven't really realized it for the last year that this has been going on. So, there's a huge accumulation out there already on some of these ranches that's continuing. So, we need to find some way of stopping it from continuing for a long time. I mean, even if they stop Lake Okeechobee now, I mean, you're going to have this contamination coming down for years and years and years, probably past my lifetime. We're not going to see Blue Cypress be like it was a few years ago. Lisa Reineman and I were out there, and we took a few pictures. I'm just going to quickly show you that there is still a huge problem, and it's expanding. This is taken right around the boat ramp at Blue Cypress Lake. The one on the left is at the ramp, and so is the one on the right. So, it's moving in all over the place. And we went and visited all the canals in the village there, and they all have this kind of situation here in the next slide. This shows it out at the stick marsh, so it's expanded, and that's why Lisa Reineman is really concerned. This is going to be moving down to Jacksonville if we aren't really concerned. So, here you should get everybody concerned all the way on down the river here. So we're going to get everybody concerned all the way on down the river here. And some of this, of course, the St. John's will tell you that there's only discharge now into the lagoon from the C-54 canal and one, you know, one in 100 storms. But we've had those storms in the last four years, a couple of them, where there has been discharge into the lagoon. So this material could still go into the lagoon in addition to going down this. And I was just down yesterday, we have, we had a, our, after summer camp, kids were down here, and we put kayaks in here at this, here, but this is the Blue Cypress, our, where is it? Oslo Boat Ramp. And that's not looking very good either. That is looking about as bad as I have ever seen it. And there's a lot of seagrasses that seem to be dying and floating up to the edge. And the water quality, you can't see the bottom, even in the left-hand side is where they put the canoes and kayaks in. Normally, you can see the water, the sand bottom very clearly. You cannot see the bottom where they put the canoes in now, and that's only three or four inches deep. It's thick with a black, brownish, greenish-looking stuff. Now, I didn't see any of this green algae that we're seeing out at the lake, but the quality of the lake, in the west, the wind was coming from the east, and it's blowing the water probably from the mooring over towards the thing because normally, it's not this bad-looking. I was quite surprised, and I was, it was our naturalist that told me, you've got to go down and take a look at this. Well, we had kids in there, and she, the kids still went into the, in the, with their kayaks and went over to clean the soil islands over there. But this is bad, and I'm so, I'm concerned about the lagoon. We haven't had problems in our lagoon in Indian River County so bad, but I think we might have a problem here now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment? Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. My name is John Norris. I live at 566 Cross Creek Circle on the Sebastian River. I support the moratorium that's being proposed fully. However, I'm a West Point engineer. I've got a master's degree and a Juris Doctorate. I can assure you, I understand water and hydraulics. The water is not flowing to the west, going under the turnpike. It's flowing to the north and to the east. I've been out there on my bike, I've been out there in a pontoon boat on the lake multiple times, and what has occurred recently to our vision is an atrocity that's going on. Obviously, in my career, I've been confrontational my whole life, okay? I worked for Janet Reno. I was a division chief in homicide section. I pursued many homicides in Miami. And what occurring here is essentially the homicide of Blue Cypress Lake. Dylan, if there's any fear about Mr. Presley in the future down the road, if there's a permanent ban, pursuing any action, I volunteer my time and services in your office. I will file a counterclaim, and we will be reimbursed for the monies that need to be spent on scrubbers and cleaning the bottom of the lake and the southwestern access to the lake. In fact, you may end up owning Presley's Ranch if this continues. And I appreciate the fact he's volunteered to at least cease and desist temporarily. But as we see here, this needs to be done on a permanent basis if we want to have salvation here. I'm also authorized to speak for Michael Florio, a fisherman in Sebastian. He told me when they opened up that C-54 dam briefly in the May floods inundation, there was a fish die in the Sebastian River, the lagoon there, that he had never seen before in his life. And of course, it's his opinion that that wash coming out of C-54 now going due east into the Sebastian River and the lagoon was the cause of that fish die-off. And probably Dr. Baker, it's also the cause of what he's seeing in the lagoon. You all need to get a handle on this, and again, Dylan and I would have no fear in front of a administrative judge or six jurors in this county or even change of jurisdiction who would vote to stop this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Let me just reiterate, it's not the intent of this board to get all lawyered up at this point in time, and we do appreciate the cooperation of the property owners, and we would like to keep that level of cooperation going forward as we work through this. But I appreciate your offer of help, but I think the message we want to get out today is of more cooperation and working together to try to resolve this in a manner that's good for the county, but also is in a cooperative approach.
I agree with that. There's maybe other alternatives, though, down the road. We're talking about six months down the road. Yes, ma'am?
Yep, Commissioner Adams.
I just want to correct something. There's a, there's a popular misconception that the C-54 canal dumps into the St. Sebastian River, which is not accurate. What does dump into the St. Sebastian River is the Felsmer Main Canal, which is controlled by the Felsmer Water Control District, which drains the city of Felsmer. So I just want to clarify that because I hear it all the time, and it makes the job harder when that information is inaccurate, so.
With all due respect, ma'am, I've stood at the C-54 canal, and the dam has been closed for three or four years, but I saw when it was opened. And that canal out of the stick marsh, when they open that dam, hydraulics carries the water to the east and dumps it directly into the Sebastian River approximately 3.2 miles from the bridge on US-1.
I understand what you're saying, but again, let me reiterate that there is a spillway from the Felsmer Main Canal that dumps directly into the St. Sebastian River. The C-54 canal goes west. In the event of an extreme weather situation, it will go east, but it's, but it has been characterized by multiple people that it's constantly open and flowing east, and that is not accurate. So there is water going into, I'm not disputing that, but I think we need to be very specific about where that water is coming from and where on a regular basis it's coming from. So I just, I'm not here to argue with you about it, I just want to reiterate that.
Ma'am, you're 100% correct. When that dam has been closed, not only has it been closed and no water flowing east, sediment has built up and grass has grown. But again, like you just expressed, at times, there's a necessity to move some of the water to the east, and that's what occurs. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to address the Presley Ranch situation. We did go out there, staff went out there for a site visit, and I do want to say that I don't think Mr. Presley had any intention of harming Blue Cypress. He expressed to county staff that he doesn't want to hurt Blue Cypress, and if it's shown to him that the biosolid spreading is harming Blue Cypress, that he would, he would stop doing that, and that's his intention. He does want the decision to be fact-based, and I think that's what we should be doing. I think that's what the ordinance, or what the moratorium is about, is that's giving us six months to get our arms around this, to investigate it, to make a determination based on fact and on science. But I do want to make sure that we're not overly vilifying a landowner, that I don't think the intentions have been to do any harm, and I think his position is that he would stop doing that indefinitely, is what he has told us, if it's determined that that is harming Blue Cypress. And I think that's a reasonable position, and I think that as we go forward, that's what we're going to be looking for, is fact-based information to make a determination on this.
Absolutely, Jason, thank you. And I do want to say that in Vincent's presentation, he had the location of all the permitted sites in Indian River County, and one of them was the Corrigan Ranch. And we heard testimony two weeks ago from Brian Corrigan, that I think he said a couple years ago, they started phasing out the acceptance of the biosolids, and they no longer accept biosolids. So even though they're still listed as a permitted site, they have taken the position not to accept any of it. So I think, again, that ties with what Jason was saying. I think the farm, the landowners, the ranchers are trying to do the right thing and are working very cooperatively with us, and certainly, I think that's the intent of this board to continue in that direction, so. Good morning, welcome, your name and address, please, sir.
Good morning, sir. My name is Mike Johansson. I'm at 4506 Buffalo Creek Drive. Just to be sure I understand, what we have here is a 180-day moratorium on the application of biosolids?
Of Class B biosolids within the unincorporated parts of Indian River County. So this would not apply within the city limits of Felsmer, not apply within the city limits of Sebastian, Vero, et cetera, just the unincorporated parts of the county. So the Presley Ranch would be included because that's in the unincorporated county. A lot of, like I say, the Corrigan Ranch is actually in the city of Felsmer now, so only in the unincorporated county.
My question is, is it renewable? And if it is renewable, do we have a mechanism for renewing it?
Yes. I can have Dylan answer that question, but in his, in the actual resolution of the ordinance, well, we can actually shorten it if we come to a conclusion before, or it can be extended. But I'll let Dylan answer that as far as the mechanism and how we go about doing that.
Yes. It could be extended, and I have in the draft ordinance that the moratorium may be extended or terminated early by adoption of an ordinance or resolution. So essentially, the board would have to take an affirmative action to continue the moratorium after the 180 days.
Okay, so the default is if we don't do anything, it dies?
It would sunset, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, just as a point of clarification, our moratorium applies to the unincorporated area. I have had discussions with Jason Nunamaker, city manager for Felsmer, and his intention is to recommend to his city council that they move forward with a similar manner, and that's the only municipality I'm aware of that has other permitted sites or where it would be feasible. So the city of Felsmer, my understanding is the city manager is, they're planning to move forward with a moratorium as well.
Very good, thank you, Jason. Good morning again.
Abby Johnson with the St. John's River Water Management District. I just wanted to take this moment to clarify and reiterate what Commissioner Adams mentioned earlier. The district is absolutely committed to water quality, and that does mean protecting the Indian River Lagoon. And the C-54 is only open during extreme weather conditions. That canal has not been open since directly after Hurricane Irma. So if you'd like more information about when we open that, and I think it's really been less than five times since it's been built, I would even say less than four, please see me after this meeting. I'll happily share with you that information and show you on our website where you can see when those canals are open, when the, when the weirs are opening. You can also see the water levels. I'll happily share that with you. So I'd love to get good information out on the street. Thank you so much, and I apologize for detracting from the conversation.
Oh, no, thank you for the information, Abby, appreciate it. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on the moratorium? Good morning, welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Jacqueline Cannon, 1901 Bay Road. I was at the Biosolids Symposium with several of the commissioners and really appreciate, that was a mind-boggling day with lots of information. One of my takeaways was how difficult it is to do the testing and monitoring and how confusing it can be because when it rains, it changes the results. So I don't know with what consistency that the testing will be done to give you the kind of reliable scientific information that you want, but it might be good for people to kind of put their heads together in advance and come up with a set of criteria that you agree with, that you will feel is reliable, kind of going into this process, because it is a very tricky thing to do. And I know that you're seeking to have accuracy and information you can depend on. And I was also wondering during this moratorium if it's possible for this really great group that you've pulled together to look at what the other alternatives might be for processing biosolids using new technologies? It might be a very good win-win situation, both economically and for the health of waters and so forth, to consider some of the other things that are really emerging in that area.
Yes, ma'am, I would think that would be something that the technical advisory committee would look at once they're formed and get going on that.
Okay, great, thank you very much for all you're doing.
Just for the record, we've, have received a handful of emails, about 15. Most of those folks have been in support of the moratorium. We did receive an email from Blake Hachth, H-A-C-H-T. He was with the sledge hauling company, and he did not feel the moratorium was needed. Majority of the emails we've received have been in support of the moratorium. Is there anyone else from the audience in the public that wishes to comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners? Commissioner Fletcher?
I wanted to ask the attorney a question, and again, it came up, and we had discussed it regarding the new, renewability, and it appears that it will be automatically sunsetted unless we take any action. Could we change that mechanism in going forward, that it's automatically renewable unless we do something? In other words, if we, if there are some findings that it's, the biosolids are unrelated, then of course, we're going to have to, we will have a public hearing and change that. But why not leave it intact, that it's automatically renewable, if we could?
One of the concepts with the moratorium is to have a definitive period in which you're essentially tasking staff or, you know, for research to be done. I'm just concerned that a, sort of an automatic renewal will essentially be viewed as, you know, a, and I don't even know what the duration would be then if there was an automatic renewal. So I'm kind of struggling with that concept. I think it's safer from a legal standpoint to have a hard date, but certainly allow ourselves the flexibility to move forward with bringing back something if we're making progress, but we don't have the full answer yet.
If I may suggest that, this is the third time in about six weeks we've discussed biosolids. And I think this is, the commission's unified in pushing this forward, and my guess is it'll be useful and beneficial for us to have probably updates during the way, so to have this as a guidepost, which we know we'll have to, you know, recompile all the information that we have and make a, I think it'll be good if we have to make a public case for another moratorium. I anticipate, actually, the way things work, that we may have to, but I think that the more information that we get out to everybody, particularly in this county, the better off we'll be. So I actually see the fact that we'll be required to come back here in six months to renew it if necessary as a positive thing.
And I agree, I just brought it up because I just felt that it would just enhance the commitment that we have and the confidence with the community that we are not going to step away from this until it's resolved.
And I think we've seen from today that the community will require us to keep focused, and that's a good thing.
Yes.
And I think probably a lot of the people we've heard from would prefer a permanent ban, but I think this is the proper course, that we're taking the right steps, so that when we, if we ever do get to that point, we'll have the scientific information to base it on instead of a de facto permanent ban now. Commissioner Adams?
Yes, a couple comments. One, the only other locations that biosolids are permitted for land application fall within the city of Felsmer, is that correct, Benny?
No, the Flying L Ranch is in unincorporated county, right?
I mean, besides the unincorporated county.
Oh, okay.
Flying L is just to the west of 95.
Right.
There's none within the city of Sebastian or city of Air Beach.
Correct.
And the city of Felsmer has indicated that they are going to do something similar or would like to partner with us to do something similar?
Yes, I had a conversation with Jason Nunamaker, and I think his intention is that this, is that the city would like to move forward in a similar manner to what the, what the county is doing. Have a meeting scheduled with him for later this week, and that's one of the things that we will discuss, that we plan to discuss. And I think it would be them, you know, our preference is that they would do their own moratorium. That's my understanding is what they're doing, but Jason expressed to me that they wanted to move along in a similar manner to the county and ban, or issue a moratorium for the biosolids. That's my understanding. That's the city manager. Obviously, he's got to make a recommendation of the city council, and they've got to make a determination.
So I would, I would just want to reiterate that as they move through the process... So I would just want to reiterate that as they move through the process that we're moving through, that we're working together with our other agencies to ensure that whatever we're doing is going to be applied, you know, uniformly so it's, so we're able to get the most bang for our buck in this project, in this process.
And I would certainly be happy to work with Warren Dill on any of the issues concerning this.
Fantastic. The other thing, you know, we're going to have six months, so staff, the whole purpose of the moratorium is to gather information and do something and come to some conclusions. So I would hope as we talk about this moratorium and, you know, impose that, that we're going to give some direction to staff to work with partner agencies and landowners to develop testing sites, testing plans, testing indicators, as Peter indicated, or asked about, as well as working on the regulation and enforcement and oversight of this whole program and come back with an update and some suggestions for discussion so that we're utilizing that six months in an efficient way.
And to Commissioner Adams' point, specifically in the ordinance, it states that the Board of County Commissioners is directing the county administrator to coordinate with FDEP and study the in-depth and report on the findings. So we're definitely tasking the county administrator to move forward and work with the cooperative agencies.
And that's our intention, DEP and St. John's, they're more subject matter experts in this than we are, so we're going to be working with them, coordinating with them, hoping to get additional information in, from them as we move forward on this.
Fantastic.
Okay, I think Commissioner Zork, do you have any comments?
Just on, when we look at the testing, I think you've definitely got to monitor rainfall simultaneously with the testing to look and see if there, some of these are causes of the rainfall data and at the, last time we discussed this, I did pull up some of the rainfall data that's out there and collected and it just needs to be kind of harmonized with the other data to plot in the background to see, and then there's obviously probably a lag time, if it rains today, it's not going to show up in the lake tomorrow, that there's a travel time and so somebody's got to kind of program the matrix of that so it all blends together and can make sense.
And Dylan, that kind of sparks a point in me. You know, if Presley hasn't applied any since May and we have a six-month moratorium, you know, I don't know how long any of this stuff stays in the water column. I mean, we can test for nitrogen and phosphorus, but not knowing if there's another marker, we can't really say where it's coming from. Would we want to put in here an exemption for any type of an experimental site where, you know, we would, you could dump a load, monitor the rainfall and then measure the runoff of that site so that we could get an indication of what happens if rain lands on the biosolid materials, what, you know, what comes off? Because right now, I'm not sure what we could really test for if there hasn't been any active biosolid applications.
Unless you did a isotope marker, like something that...
And that could very well be, but that might take some time and I'm just kind of thinking down the road, you know, this could be somewhere, you know, way upland, far away from any real water body. And actually, you could dump a load and, you know, run some sprinklers on it to simulate rainfall and then measure that water coming off of it, say, okay, what's in it? I'm just, I'm just trying to think, you know...
And I'm just taking some quick notes here, is essentially, we've got in Section 3 of the ordinance, beginning on the effective date of this ordinance and continuing for a period of 180 days or less if provided by an ordinance by the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners, a moratorium is hereby imposed upon all properties within the unincorporated areas of Indian River County involved in land application of Class B biosolids, except were determined to be inconsistent with or preempted by state law or regulation. We could add in there, or as needed for the studies as set forth below, because then in Section 5, we specifically say that the county administrator is coordinating with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and studying in-depth and reporting findings. Does that kind of address your issue in terms of...
Yeah, I think we just want to leave a window where if we, you know, if we do want to go out to some field, dump a load and then run a sprinkler on it to simulate a one-and-a-half-inch rainfall event, and then we would have water that we could test and measure what's in it.
And Ms. Chair, my guess is if something with that was going to happen, it would be led by DEP, so they'd probably have the authority to do it anyway, but I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented with the addition that the county attorney just mentioned that adds the allowing testing as needed, basically.
Testing as needed and approved by DEP or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, and that would be a modification of Section 3?
Yes.
And then just some simple wording to the fact that, or exempt for testing as approved and by DEP?
Okay, so except as testing is approved by DEP, I can certainly incorporate that, incorporate that language, thank you.
Okay. So that was a motion by Commissioner Florio. I'll second that motion and that's to adopt the six-month moratorium on biosolid, Class B biosolid land applications in unincorporated Indian River County with a slight amendment to Section 3 allowing for testing of runoff and biosolids if needed and approved by DEP. Okay, so Commissioners, any discussion on the motion? Okay, I think we've heard a lot of public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to just to comment to the amendment we added to Section 3? Dr. Baker?
One comment, I think it's good that you're bringing up, bringing in Felsmer because they're going to be dumping this stuff somewhere.
Right.
If you banned them from the county, they're going to either take it to another county or they're going to find a place in the county that goes outside of this. So we're not helping these other counties out there by this ban either. It's got to be more of a statewide thing, but I'm so happy that you're doing this, it's a great thing, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else want to comment on the amendment to Section 3 in the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify with aye. Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thank you all, we appreciate everybody that came out and provided comments on this issue and I think it's very clear the county's taking this very seriously. We are also very glad to be working with the landowners in a cooperative manner and appreciate their cooperation and we look forward to working with the landowners, DEP and St. John's as this goes forward and our legislative delegation, so. All right, that takes us to county administrator matters, support for the city of Vero Beach application for Florida Department of Economic Opportunities grant. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On July 3rd, the board had a discussion regarding the city of Vero Beach Airport grain application under Commissioner Zork's matters. During the discussion, board directed staff to get some additional information. Some of that was that have we resolved, has the city resolved some of the right-of-way issues that we had experienced and challenged this project in the past. I did speak to Jim O'Connor, he indicated that they are going through a process with FAA regarding some airport property that they need to go through a process to get that transitioned to be a city right-of-way for the roadway. Once they do that, the right-of-way will be taken care of. We also, there was also a question about the railroad crossing that had been a challenge in the past when we were looking at widening Aviation Boulevard and the city manager said to me that he has stated publicly in public meetings that they would maintain responsibility for that railroad crossing at, on Aviation Boulevard just west of US-1. So that is, those two items seem to be resolved. The city anticipates applying for funding that would fully fund the project. I think there have been some previous projects that have happened that could be kind of, kind of utilized as a match, some of the projects that the county has completed there in the past. Also, there was a question about whether the county had applied for any grants from DEO, sorry, under this category. Last year, the county had applied for a grant for our Sebastian Septic to Sewer Project that was not awarded. This year, we do not have any active applications, so the county does not have an active application there in this cycle. So with that being said, I think the questions that the board had asked have been addressed. We have presented here a resolution that would support the city's application for the DEO grant and staff is recommending that the board approve the attached resolution.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of Jason?
Commissioner Zork?
Probably it's more appropriate for, if it passes first, so I'll withdraw that and make a motion to approve if, we're happy to answer any other questions as well.
Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner Zork, to approve the letter of support. We have a second from Commissioner Adams. Any discussion? Hearing none, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify with aye. Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Yes, I'd like to add that, so that we properly communicate the completed projects and future projects that the county is undertaking, that there be some sharing of that cost data and a small amount of staff time to make sure as the city prepares the application that the projects that, the original 20th Avenue Bridge and then more recently, the 20th Avenue signalization that was paid for with the county, so we can just try to make the city's application as robust as possible. There may be some other areas where we can at least maybe look at their application before they send it in, just to try to put some other eyes on it before it's sent into the state.
Excuse me, have they asked us to look at their application?
Um...
If they haven't clearly asked us, I just think it's inappropriate for us to step in front of them.
Okay.
To me, that's an aspect of home rule and for us being so...
Put it this way, if they ask, may we...
Let's get the request one way or the other and then have the county administrator...
Okay, what about the cost data information?
Again, I think they ought to ask us for it because we've seen too many times. I'm still sore from a May 5 diatribe from a city council person about what the county has and hasn't done, that was just totally inaccurate, so I may be oversensitive to this, but I don't want to get in front of that bus. You know, we've been hit too often by it, by mischaracterizations of what we've said and done and this is one of those cases where I really believe requests like this ought to come from them. So that's, as I said, maybe I'm too sensitive on it, but I'm Italian and that happens.
That's fine, but we'll see if they ask when I have my next meeting with them on this same topic that I have monthly meetings or even more frequently with the folks at the airport.
Okay.
Thank you.
That sounds good. Commissioners, before we go into Department of Matters, let's take a quick break, we'll come back at 11:30.